Well, good morning. We have a very large crowd today and we're gonna try to get started here in just a moment. We're delighted to have so many visitors. Our Purple Heart guys are here on the front row. We thank you for your service. Thank you for your service. There are a number of others here who are here for special things and we'll get to those as quickly as we can. Commissioner Chestney this morning is gonna do the invocation, followed by the pledges to the U.S. and Texas flags. And I think we got everybody here. We have a new mic system and it's a great challenge to an old Aggie. And everything is on all the time unless you punch a button off. And so we had to be very... Would you take your hat off, sir, in the room, please? Thank you very much. Everyone one has to be very careful what they say up here 'cause what you think gets picked up with a mic. But the good news is she can control it right over there, too, and she can turn everybody off if we get out of shape. So... But it's a great mic system. You can hear us a lot better and we'll be communicating a lot better. So what I'm gonna ask you to do is if you'll stand, please, for the invocation and the pledges.
Brent?
Thank you. Will you bow with me in prayer? Dear God, we come to you today with grateful hearts, grateful that we live in a nation that allows us to pray publicly, to stand up for our beliefs. We appreciate all that you've given us. We especially thank you for those veterans that are in the room today and all that they have given to this country and all the veterans who are not here in the room today and all that they have given to this country. Lord, we ask your blessings on this court today that we make good, sound decisions and that we make those good and sound decisions with a faithful heart and faithful minds. We appreciate all that you've done for us, all that you've given us. We ask your blessings on all that are here and all that aren't. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Thank you, Brent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Yes, sir. That was my first.
Okay. Well, it's a little after ten. Today is the 11th of July. All members of the court are present. We have a quorum. We're meeting in the New Oasis County Commissioners' courtroom in the New Oasis County Courthouse. I'd like to call for approval of the minutes of June the 18th, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Thank you. It is now time for me to open a public hearing. And I call for a motion to open the public hearing, please, to receive public comment on the designation of a reinvestment zone for temporary property tax abatement to be established under chapter 312 of the Texas Tax Code. May I have a motion, please?
Amen.
Thank you. May I have a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. We've now opened the public hearing. Who's gonna lead the discussion? You here? All right.
Good morning, sir. Mike Culberson.
Hello, Mike.
Corpus Christi Regional EDC. What we're asking for is a reinvestment zone. A reinvestment zone is entities can use that allow certain incentives for companies moving into this area. It has to reach certain limits and levels and this one has. What this allows is for temporary tax abatement. It allows for, if the school district so decides to do this, and what we, what the whole point of this is to get that kind of investment, those good jobs into places that do not have that or on the lower side of the scale. And I stand ready to answer any questions. We'll go through the abatement later, but...
That's correct. Any questions of Mike?
I do.
Please.
So if we approve or this goes through us and then has the school board already gone through their part on this or...
No, sir. They, they, the, first off, the reinvestment zone has to be established before the school district can do anything.
And then it'll go as a 313?
Correct, 313. So they need a policy which they have passed already. And so when, when you do the 313, the reinvestment zone, it allows them to, to consider a 313. I'm not gonna say they can pass it, but they, allows them to consider that.
Okay. Any other questions? We don't, where, Laura, we don't vote on that, do we, or do I?
You just close.
I close the public hearing and then go, and then go the action item. Correct. Any other question, any public comment? See none? May I have a motion to close the public hearing, please? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. All right, here are the following resolutions. I'm gonna go to... Do you wanna go to that item? Yeah, where is it? Where is that item? I'm looking for it.
You're, you're trying to go to the tax abatement?
Yes. Where is that?
4A1 and 4A2.
All right, 4A1, 4A2. We're gonna move Commissioners to 4A1 and 4A2. 4A1 is discuss and consider adopting the order designating the Permico Midstream Partners LLC Zone within New Oasis County. That's 4A1. And 4A2 is discuss and consider adopting an order authorizing the execution of an agreement with the same firm providing for temporary tax abatement pursuant to chapter 312 of the Texas Code. Mike, you wanna make any comments on those before we vote? Or... Hello, John. Good morning. How'd you get in? How'd you get in here?
Members, I've been working with the county attorney and Mr. Little in the project and the zone. I'll meet all the required requirements under the law.
All right. Thank you very much. Is the recommendation of the EDC that we approve this?
Yes, sir, it is.
So moved. All right. I have a motion. Can I get a second? All right, now, now we can discuss it. Go ahead, Joe.
Okay, I'm asking, what, what, what are you asking for in this abatement? What, how many years? What?
It's a, it's, under your policy, it's three years of construction at 100% and then five years at 50%. And just so you know, over the 10 years from, from start to finish, they will still pay the county $6.3 million in taxes. And that, that's not, you know, I didn't put like 550 or whatever and just kept it. You know, I depreciated it over, you know, for 2.25% throughout. And so that's what you're going to get. And remember, I do the compliance. So, you know, come next year, I'm knocking on the door, I'm checking to see what they, what they did, that they've hired, that they're paying what they said they were gonna pay. And then I present a letter to the county.
Are we going with the, I know, I think the standard is, is there like 10 or something permanent employees? Is that part of this? I know we've done that in previous agreements or what? Do we have?
Yes, it is. Yes, it's 52.
52?
Yes, sir.
Full-time?
Full-time jobs that are W-2 and they have to have health insurance in there.
And do we know, have an average of how much those jobs will earn per year? Just ballpark. I don't need anything specific.
55, 6.
55, 6.
Yes, sir.
At least 52.
Yes, sir.
That, that I can support.
That's good.
You know, when we come in here with five or 10, I mean, we, we appreciate and want and need the construction, but we're putting that much effort into abatements, I wanna see something long-term.
Understand.
So, and, and I know we've talked about that before and I appreciate Permico making that investment and hearing those concerns and really putting a bigger footprint into this community. That's, that's a good sizable payroll that we can count on and look at those people living in this community for years to come. So, all right.
And not only that, you're, you're, and, and we're seeing this at the EDC, you're building out the west side of the county.
You bet.
You know, it's, it's been difficult. There's not a lot out there, but, you know, there are places and, you know, through the judge's efforts with I-69, you know, that's what, that's what we're seeing and that's what we're hoping to build that out all the way to the, to the county line.
Like, when you say 100,000 technicians, 26, 100,000, and you got operators, six, 85,000, are you saying 85,000 each pay or...
Yes, 80,000 each. That is the average salary. Actually, the average salary is 92, I'm saying.
92.
Right. I saw that. That's what I'm saying. Commissioner Martin has made a point there, but, and this is, I mean, these are good salaries. I mean, very good salaries.
4.8 million dollars.
Is there anybody here from Permico?
Yes, sir. We have Jeff.
Just wanted to say thank you very much for your commitment to Oasis County and we appreciate you and we wanna, we certainly like to be known as a business friendly, business friendly place to operate and we sure appreciate your investment in Oasis County. So, thank you very much.
Mike?
Thank you.
Mike, I'm sorry. I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
I fully support this, by the way, of course, and I think it's gonna be a start for economic development in the county. Just for the public, so they know, can you tell them a little quick about the company, Permico?
Okay. Permico is, is what they're...
Why don't we bring John in?
Okay.
Yeah, why don't we bring, that's a good idea.
Come up.
Put a face.
You're from the main, from the main men.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much for having me today.
You bet. Tell us about your company a little bit, please.
Certainly. Permico is a, is a natural gas liquids company. So what's going to happen is we're going to take natural gas liquids from west Texas where there's a lot of drilling in the Permian Basin right now, move those down into the Robstown area, and we have the, the item that's being built there is called a fractionator. So what happens is, is the liquids that, that come down all combined run through the fractionator and run into their component parts. And then those component parts are moved into the market. They'll go to people like Exxon Sabeck who's building a petrochemical facility and pretty close to us. Some of them will go waterborne out of the port and some of them will move their way probably back up to the Houston Ship Channel via another pipeline that'll run from Robstown up to Mount Bellevue, Texas.
And can I just ask why, you know, what prompted you to do what you do here in New Oasis County, I guess?
What we looked at was, we looked at future growth of the energy industry in the state of Texas. And if you look in the area between, say, Lake Charles, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, and Freeport, Texas, it's all what's called a non-attainment zone. So it becomes very, very difficult to get permits to build things. So what we've seen is that as people permit in the, for new facilities, that those facilities are moving farther south. And the other thing is, is the Houston Ship Channel has become very congested. The Port of Corpus Christi is making a lot of economic improvements. They're very, very business friendly. And so we see new business investment coming in in the energy business through the port. And so we would like to be adjacent to a deepwater port because that's essential for us for the products that we have that move offshore.
And, and these are what you call softball questions because, but, but there's a reason for them and it's important because we spend a lot of time on things in here that sometimes people go, what the heck are y'all spending all that time on? And sometimes we blow over the things that are, that are so, so important like this. And, and so I really wanted you to have the opportunity to come up and do that and as did others up here because this is a great investment in our community. There's a reason we're doing what we're doing today. And it's good for people to see a face of the company and not just the EDC guys coming up and saying, and it's always good to see John Bell. He gets his face everywhere. But it's nice when the community says, okay, here's, here's the representative and, and here's who's coming and they're bringing jobs. And, and I think sometimes it's important that we spend a little extra time fluffing on the good stuff like this, too. So we really, really thank you for your investment in, in Oasis County because that's gonna help the...
Looking 52 jobs.
Thank you. I rarely hear from anybody that my face looks good.
Absolutely.
Very nice.
You get 52 jobs. Do you foresee that to increase in the future?
Yes, sir. We, we anticipate that we will make downstream investments from the investment that we're making as well as expand the facilities as, as we see the opportunity to bring in more, more product.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Very good. I think we have a motion now. A second?
Yes, sir.
Call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Thank you for being here. Thanks for your investment.
Thank you, Judge. We appreciate it.
4A2, we're gonna adopt an order authorizing the execution. I'd like to make the motion we approve the order. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions or concerns? See none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Good luck, guys. Thank you for coming. It's good to see you.
Shovel's ready.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the investment. We'll now go back to the front of the agenda and we have a group of patriots here today who have done something that most Americans never do. And that, they became wounded in combat in one way or another. And they're members of the Purple Heart Group, the Purple Heart... What do, what do we call this, Ram? Association? Purple Heart?
Do you have order of the Purple Heart?
Thank you very much. Which is, these veterans here have all been wounded and received the Purple Heart, which is first designated, if I remember correctly, in Civil War.
American Revolution.
Well, you were a lot older than I am then, so...
What'd you say, Ram?
Let me, let me ask you guys if you'll come on up around here. We'd love to have you come up with us and we're gonna read the resolution. Can you come all the way around, please? Anybody need any help to come up?
Come in.
Please, if you will, come all the way around. Thank you. Tiner, you have the resolution?
I do, Judge.
Okay.
Shall I proceed?
Go ahead.
This is a Commissioners Court proclamation, New Oasis County, Texas, a Purple Heart County. Whereas the people of New Oasis County, Texas, have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community in the armed forces. Whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created at the, as the badge of military merit by George Washington in 1782. Whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with a declared enemy of the United States of America. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women from New Oasis County, Texas, who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. Whereas many men and women in uniform have given their lives while serving in the armed forces. Whereas June 18th, 2018, has officially been designated as the day in New Oasis County, Texas, to remember and recognize veterans who are recipients of the Purple Heart Medal. Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of New Oasis County, Texas, does hereby proclaim that New Oasis County, Texas, is a Purple Heart County.
May I have a motion, please?
Second?
I have a second, all right. All right. Y'all set, Ram?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Charge.
Here we go.
One, two, three, airborne! Hold on, please.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you'll say anything.
Make a matter of place.
Five, to cut a meal.
Thank you. of the Purple Heart. I'd like to thank Judge Neal, County Commissioners, citizens in New Oasis County, and all veterans who have served our country. A lot of people wanna know, what does it mean to be recognized as a Purple Heart County? When the county of New Oasis is recognized, we are remembering and honoring all Purple Heart recipients, living or dead. We are honoring all veterans living in New Oasis County, Texas, that have served in the military. We're taking a moment to honor George Washington and his significant contribution to our country. And we're using this moment to educate all citizens of New Oasis County of the sacrifice of your veterans and remind you to thank them for your service. The last thing I'll say is we have a chapter I belong to in the north Texas area and we named it, excuse me, 1513. And basically it was named after John 1513. Bible verse. I feel it's fitting that for all those who have been in combat and returned, this verse states, a greater love hath no man than this, that a man lay down his life for his life, for his friends. Again, thank you. Thank you, Judge, for permitting, if you will. But ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to welcome our State Commander. He comes from north Corpus Christi in Oasis County, up in Dallas. But we're very honored and I wanna press on you that the local chapter, we have every officer of our chapter is present. That is unheard of. And we have, he was surprised last night at our meeting because we doubled the attendance of most chapters. You only need five. We had over 10. So I want you to know how well we represent the military or the Purple Heart, the Allen East Valentine, Chapter 598. And State Commander, we wanna welcome and have the county, New Oasis County, Judge and Commissioners 100% behind every veteran event or issue or affair. So we wanna thank you on behalf of our chapter and our members. Thank you for your attendance and for coming to honor us with your presence. And Judge, thank you for all the support, Commissioners. Thank you very much.
Take a matter. You wanna take a picture? I'd like to take a picture with all the Commissioners. Take a matter, please.
Commissioners, come on, Mr. ...
Five.
Come on, get up there. Let me see.
He's starting to click, guys.
One, two, three, airborne. Let me get another one.
Five.
Airborne.
Tipper five.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Get another one.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Judge. Sir? Thank you. 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 Thank you, Judge. Sir? Thank you. 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 My pleasure.
Hey, Ram.
Well, that's for you.
That's for us?
Where's it gonna go?
Well, that's up to you.
Give it, give it to me. I'll take care of it.
Let us know when you...
I will. All right.
Thank you, Ram. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. I will. I'll rotate it. Don't know. We have a veteran service officer here in New Oasis County. Martin Longori is here and his staff. And they do a wonderful job. New Oasis County really is veterans-friendly. And we work very, very hard with VA and with others to make sure that we do everything we can for our veterans. And this is a great day today. We are so appreciative of those young men who showed today with the, who received the Purple Heart. And they're always welcome in the Commissioners Court Room. It's good to see all of you. Thank you. Tiner?
Judge, we have some folks for the Disability Voter Registration Week.
Good.
If they may wanna...
Come on up.
We'd like our partners to join us.
Sure, you have them here?
We have League of Women Voters. We have Post Abbot Center for Independent Living, Behavioral Health Center, and the Corpus Christi Area Council for the Deaf.
Good. Great group.
I'll go ahead and begin, Judge.
Please do.
Whereas in July 2018, people with disabilities and supporters celebrate the 28th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA. And there are over 50 million people with disabilities of all ages living in communities throughout the United States. Whereas the disability community has a critical interest in politics enacted at local, state, and national levels that affect the integration of people with disabilities, young and old, into our communities. Whereas getting the disability community involved in influencing public policies is essential if these policies are to meet the real needs of disabilities to live in the community. And voting is one way for the disability community to exert their influence at local, state, and national elections. Whereas there are multiple efforts to develop disability coalitions around the issue of voting. Whereas Rev Up America, Register, Educate, Vote, Use Your Power is a national effort to encourage local and state disability community voting coalitions. And members of the National Disability Rights Community are organizing a National Disability Voter Registration Week, July 16th through July 20th, 2018. Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of New Oasis County, Texas, does hereby support the growing involvement of the disability community in the political process and designate the week of July 16th through July 20th as National Disability Voter Registration Week in New Oasis County.
Your motion?
So moved.
I have a second. All in favor? Aye, opposed, same sign. Who's, well, good morning. Are you the spokesperson?
I'll be the spokesperson.
You're welcome. Glad to see you.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize our interpreter this morning, Toni Padilla, who is making sure that everybody's hearing the message this morning. We're so pleased to celebrate the 28th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act and the designation of Disability Voter Registration Week, July 16th through 20th. It is no accident that Disability Voter Registration Week leads up to the ADA anniversary. We remain committed to advocacy and inclusion. People with disabilities want to contribute and we must be included. Over the next week, there are a number of activities around voter rights and registration. Each of you has a information on those activities. We hope to see you for the League of Women Voters Luncheon on the 19th. I understand you've all received invitations. Molly Broadway, Disability Rights Texas, will be speaking on voting rights for people with disabilities. We encourage you to participate in some of the activities. A lot of it is around registering, educate. Voting is all part, part and parcel of that. Register, educate, vote. Thank you for joining us as we celebrate the power of the disability vote.
Very good. Thank you. Which organizations are here?
League of Women Voters.
Good.
Post Abbot Center for Independent Living.
Good.
Deaf and Hard of Hearing Center.
Good.
And the Behavioral Health Center of New Oasis County.
Congratulations. Thank you for all you do. We're glad to see you. Hi, Melody.
Good job.
Good job. Thank you very much for being...
We did a quick picture.
I want you to come up here. All right. We built this ramp over here so we could do this.
We're gonna bring Melvin front and center.
Come on up.
How are you?
Good morning. Yeah, come on over, please. Good to see all of you.
Thank you so much.
You bet. Good to see you. Come on over, ladies.
I'm doing good.
Come on over.
Good to see you.
How are you?
As always.
Good to see you. Come on over. We still have room up here.
Man, come on.
Hey. That'll be fine.
She's another tall one.
Come on over, Judge. Good morning. Good morning. Okay, we got everybody. Come on, Carol, get in here.
I know that I, I know that I won't block the view of the judge.
Two, three. One, two, three. Want to do one more? Two, three. Got it?
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Sure, we'll see y'all again. All right, thank you for coming up. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you. Appreciate you. Okay.
There's been nothing in the color times. Last we heard, last spring, the county jail had lost its contract with the US Marshals because of problems related to overcrowding and that it was too slowly processing inmates. So all of that is related, and we're here today to ask for transparency. I heard Brent Chesney asking the gentleman from PermaCo, that company, about what he was doing. You were giving him some softball questions in the interest of letting the public know what was happening. I appreciated that, since I certainly didn't know that company. And so I'm asking that you bring in that same level of transparency, perhaps not ask softball questions, maybe some hardball questions to the sheriff, because there's interest in the community. We want to know what's going on. It's been over a year now. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Torres?
Chloe. Chloe Torres. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Chloe Torres, and I'm here today as a member of the Corpus Christi Immigration Coalition as well. And like Claudia, I do wish that we had more transparency around the 287G agreement that was signed into place by our Sheriff, Kalen. So, last we heard from him, the jails were overcrowded, we don't have a lot of funding. And so studies have been done that show that 287G mostly impacts people with misdemeanors. And so what we're doing is we're having our officers go work overtime to arrest nonviolent offenders. And also, like, it's our taxpayer money that's funding this. Like, we all work hard to provide for our families, and I, like, it feels unconscionable to provide money for this service, especially as studies have also been done that 287G costs taxpayers $675,000 to $6.4 million annually. And I personally, if we're trying to cut $600,000 from the Parks and Rec Department, where are we gonna have extra money to put these officers on the streets? It doesn't make a whole lot of sense when you think about it. But yes, so we, again, would really like you to have a meeting set up, maybe with Sheriff Kalen, to come and discuss the budget, because like we said, there has been no news on it. We want transparency, we want the public to be informed about where our taxpayer money is going. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Canales? Eddie Canales? Is that correct? Yes, there he is. Hi, Eddie. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners. I myself also would like to request that the, that item, 287G, be brought up here and invite the sheriff. As you know, nationally, the issue is with separation of families, and 287G is nothing but that in terms of a tool to separate families. And I think that this court should take a look at that and ask the sheriff, you know, and what impact has this had regarding, you know, families being separated and the use of this tool, of this voluntary program that the sheriff publicly had said that he wouldn't implement and would not apply for. And he says that in front of close to 300 people, immigrant population in this city, and then he turns around and does the opposite. So we are requesting the transparency, we are requesting that the sheriff come and report to us in terms of what has transpired over the last six months in terms of implementation of this agreement. And thank you very much.
Ms. Santos?
Good morning. Thank you. My name's Catherine Santos. I'm also here with the Corpus Christi Immigration Coalition, and I just want to echo my colleagues' comments and calls for transparency, specifically in how many of our local tax dollars are being used to carry out federal immigration enforcement. And on a less specific note, just something that I've been thinking about is a concern about public safety, which I know is what our sheriff's offices, officers are invested in, but it's a concept that relies on trust between all residents and local law enforcement. So we cannot expect that trust to exist if the very people that are supposed to serve and protect are also instilling fear in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thomas?
Thank you. Hi, I'm also here to speak on the 287G agreement. I live in Commissioner Chesney's district. I would, like the rest of the coalition, really appreciate if you, you as the Commissioners, could call the sheriff in to ask him about what the status of this agreement is, why he decided to do it, after he did say at a town hall we had with the immigrant community that he was not interested in a 287G agreement. And so we were surprised and disappointed by this development. Ultimately, it is his call, but there's things that can happen with the budget to make sure that our tax dollars don't get spent on this bad policy, and y'all as Commissioners can make sure that that happens. I know that you can't respond to any of this because it's not an agenda item, but I'd really like to see it be an agenda item at the next meeting. We'll be here again. I'm a grad student, I don't have anything better to do on Wednesdays, so I'm just gonna keep coming. And I think it's really important not to, A, waste our tax dollars on these kinds of bad policies, B, not to be separating families as a county. We're in the middle of a moral crisis in our country, and history will remember who came down on what sides. And think about how you want history to remember this Commissioners' Court. And finally, I want law enforcement to be able to do the jobs that are important for them to do. And the 287G agreement really weakens trust in the community with law enforcement and makes it harder for them to do their jobs. The average citizen doesn't know the difference between a CCPD officer and a sheriff's officer. And so when word is spread through the immigrant community that there's a 287G agreement and that the sheriff's department is effectively immigration enforcement, that makes them not trust Corpus Christi PD as well, and that makes Corpus Christi PD's job a lot harder. So I'd ask you to consider all of those things and put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else here? Any other public comment?
Judge, just on that, I'm not gonna engage with what they're saying, but we have a new Commissioner since we had that last discussion, so if you'd like to get her the packet information that you provided us last year, that might get her up to speed on what exactly the 287G is. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other public comment? Very good. Thank you. Consent agenda items or items will be void on the one vote by members of the court unless a member of the public or a member of the court asks that item be pulled and individually discussed. I'll now call for public comment on consent agenda items 3A through 3X. 3A through 3X, consent agenda items on the public. See none? Commissioners, any comment on items 3A through 3X on the consent agenda? If not, I'll call for a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. I'm gonna move on to 4A8. Commissioner Chesney, you want to take the ball here?
Thank you, Judge. This is a proposal that has not been voted on by the city, but we've been in negotiations with the city, and I wanted to go ahead and put it out for the Commissioners' Court to consider. As some of you may know, the city of Corpus Christi has a pool in Flower Bluff called Parker Pool. For budgetary reasons and other reasons, and Councilmember Smith's here, he can talk more to that as well, and I appreciate him being here, they have contracted, or contracted with a local group called the Coastal Bend Friends of Aquatics. And the Coastal Bend Friends of Aquatics have been running that pool, this is, I think, the start of their third year going on with them. They've done a phenomenal job of running that pool on basically a shoestring, and it's also a facility, as Commissioner Vaughn will know, and I think Commissioner Mottis too, since we've all kind of been familiar with that from our city council days, and Judge Neal too. Sorry, Joe, don't mean to leave you out, you just, you know, the rest of us, the rest of us got away from the city as quick as we could. No, I'm kidding. Yeah, you're, yeah, right. That, what to do with that pool has been a real problem for the city for quite some time. And so, excuse me, Edward Herrera's been working with me and working with the Coastal Bend Friends of Aquatics and the city of Corpus Christi to come up with a solution to work jointly together with them in regards to helping keep that very important community pool going in Flower Bluff, which also serves the island. And there's really, that's the only community pool, I think, in that entire area. And so we don't want to lose that community pool, because it would really leave us in a, in a kind of a short-sighted situation. So in working with the city, we've come up with a proposal today, and what I'm asking the court to do is authorize negotiations with the city of Corpus Christi related to the conveyance of Parker Pool, including the real property, to be operated by a third party. And what's that, what that means is, the city, and I know Commissioner Gonzalez is familiar with this, he's done this in his precinct, is they would convey the property to us. I would use the CO money allocated to Precinct 4 to do what is needed to get the repairs and maintenance up to speed, and I would use some of my precinct funds to also give them a one-time, this is all one-time injections, and then the Coastal Bend Friends of Aquatics would continue to run this entity at no cost to the general fund of the, of Nuasis County. And I think what this does is it just really gives us an opportunity to show the community that the city and the county and third-party operators can work together to get something done and make something work in a very positive, transparent, upfront way. And I'm very enthused about it. The city's been very receptive and very favorable to it. We've had good negotiations with them, we've had good meetings with them. We're to a point where we feel a no-deal is a done-deal by any means until this body votes on it and the city votes on it. But we're at a point now where I feel like we're ready to have a discussion about it and vote on it, and then the city will, assuming hopefully that this body passes it, the city will then pass it and will be able to do that. Then the devil's in the details, and then we'll kick over to our wonderful county attorney. He'll have to negotiate with their city attorney on, you know, making sure that there are some things in place, like access to the parking lot and things of that nature that we've had a lot of discussions about. We've also talked to the city about a long-term partnership with them. They have, they have been kind enough to continue to provide the water to the Flower Bluff Parker Pool. They're gonna continue to do that at no cost to the pool, is the proposal. And again, so that they're a long-term partner in this. So this is truly a real partnership. But as the court knows, we can't put CO money into things that we don't own, and the largest chunk of available funds that I've got for Precinct 4 is CO money, like most of us do. And so that's kind of where we are. And I don't know if Flo in the east is here with some folks from the pool, if they...
But yes, so we again would really like you to have a meeting set up, maybe with Sheriff Kalin, to come and discuss the budget because like we said, there has been no news on it. We want transparency, we want the public to be informed about where our taxpayer money is going. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Canales, Eddie Canales, is that correct? Yes, there he is. Hi Eddie. Thank you.
Thank you Judge, thank you Commissioners. I myself also would like to request that the, that item 287G be brought up here and invite the sheriff. As you know, nationally, the issue is with separation of families. And 287G is nothing but that in terms of a tool to separate families. And I think that this court should take a look at that and ask the sheriff, you know, and what impact has this had regarding, you know, families being separated and the use of this tool, of this voluntary program that the sheriff's publicist said that he wouldn't implement and would not apply for. And he says that in front of close to 300 people, immigrant population in this city, and then he turns around and does the opposite. So, we are requesting the transparency, we are requesting that the sheriff come and report to us in terms of what has transpired over the last six months in terms of implementation of this agreement. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Santos?
Good morning, thank you. My name's Catherine Santos, I'm also here with the Corpus Christi Immigration Coalition, and I just want to echo my colleagues' comments and calls for transparency, specifically in how many of our local tax dollars are being used to carry out federal immigration enforcement. And on a less specific note, just something that I've been thinking about is a concern about public safety, which I know is what our sheriff's offices, officers are invested in, but it's a concept that relies on trust between all residents and local law enforcement. So we cannot expect that trust to exist if the very people that are supposed to serve and protect are also instilling fear in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thomas, thank you.
Hi, I'm also here to speak on the 287G agreement. I live in Commissioner Chestney's district. I would like the rest of the coalition really appreciate if you, you as the Commissioners could call the sheriff in to ask him about what the status of this agreement is, why he decided to do it after he did say at a town hall we had with the immigrant community that he was not interested in a 287G agreement, and so we were surprised and disappointed by this development. Ultimately, it is his call, but there's things that can happen with the budget to make sure that our tax dollars don't get spent on this bad policy, and y'all as Commissioners can make sure that that happens. I know that you can't respond to any of this because it's not an agenda item, but I'd really like to see it be an agenda item at the next meeting. We'll be here again. I'm a grad student, I don't have anything better to do on Wednesdays, so I'm just gonna keep coming. And I think it's really important not to A, waste our tax dollars on these kinds of bad policies, B, not to be separating families as a county. We're in the middle of a moral crisis in our country, and history will remember who came down on what sides. And think about how you want history to remember this Commissioners' Court. And finally, I want law enforcement to be able to do the jobs that are important for them to do, and the 287G agreement really weakens trust in the community with law enforcement and makes it harder for them to do their jobs. The average citizen doesn't know the difference between a CCPD officer and a sheriff's officer. And so when word is spread through the immigrant community that there's a 287G agreement and that the sheriff's department is effectively immigration enforcement, that makes them not trust Corpus Christi PD as well, and that makes Corpus Christi PD's job a lot harder. So, I'd ask you to consider all of those things and put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else here, any other public comment?
Judge, just on that, I'm not going to engage with what they're saying, but we have a new Commissioner since we had that last discussion, so if you'd like to get her the packet information that you provided us last year, that might get her up to speed on what exactly the 287G is. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other public comment? Very good, thank you. Consent agenda items or items will be void on the one vote by members of the court unless a member of the public or a member of the court asks that item be pulled and individually discussed. I'll now call for public comment on consent agenda items 3A through 3X. 3A through 3X, consent agenda items on the public. See none, Commissioners? Any comment on items 3A through 3X on the consent agenda? If not, I'll call for a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both same sign. I'm gonna move on to 4A8. Commissioner Chestney, you want to take the ball here?
Thank you Judge. This is a proposal that has not been voted on by the city, but we've been in negotiations with the city, and I wanted to go ahead and put it out for the Commissioners' Court to consider. As some of you may know, the city of Corpus Christi has a pool in Flower Bluff called Parker Pool. For budgetary reasons and other reasons, and Councilmember Smith's here, he can talk more to that as well, and I appreciate him being here. They have contracted, are contracted with a local group called the Coastal Bend Friends of Aquatics, and the Coastal Bend Friends of Aquatics have been running that pool, this is, I think, the start of their third year going on with them. They've done a phenomenal job of running that pool on basically a shoestring, and it's also a facility, as Commissioner Vaughn will know, and I think Commissioner Mottis too, since we've all kind of been familiar with that from our city council days, and Judge Neal too. Sorry Joe, don't mean to leave you out, you just, you know, the rest of us, the rest of us got away from the city as quick as we could, no I'm kidding.
I wasn't in the audience.
Yeah, you're, yeah, right. That, what to do with that pool has been a real problem for the city for quite some time. And so, excuse me, Edward Herrera's been working with me and working with the Coastal Bend Friends of Aquatics and the city of Corpus Christi to come up with a solution to work jointly together with them in regards to helping keep that very important community pool going in Flower Bluff, which also serves the island, and there's really, that's the only community pool, I think, in that entire area. And so, we don't want to lose that community pool because it would really leave us in kind of a short sighted situation. So, in working with the city, we've come up with a proposal today, and what I'm asking the court to do is authorize negotiations with the city of Corpus Christi related to the conveyance of Parker Pool, including the real property to be operated by a third party. And what's that, what that means is, the city, and I know Commissioner Gonzalez is familiar with this, he's done this in his precinct, is they would convey the property to us, I would use the CO money allocated to Precinct 4 to do what is needed to get the repairs and maintenance up to speed, and I would use some of my precinct funds to also give them a one-time, this is all one-time injections, and then the Coastal Bend Friends of Aquatics would continue to run this entity at no cost to the general fund of the, of Noises County. And I think what this does is it just really gives us an opportunity to show the community that the city and the county and third-party operators can work together to get something done and make something work in a very positive, transparent, upfront way, and I'm very enthused about it. The city's been very receptive and very favorable to it, we've had good negotiations with them, we've had good meetings with them. We're to a point where we feel a no-deal is a done-deal by any means until this body votes on it and the city votes on it, but we're at a point now where I feel like we're ready to have a discussion about it and vote on it, and then the city will, assuming hopefully that this body passes it, the city will then pass it and will be able to do that. Then the devil's in the details, and then we'll kick over to our wonderful county attorney, he'll have to negotiate with their city attorney on, you know, making sure that there are some things in place, like access to the parking lot and things of that nature that we've had a lot of discussions about. We've also talked to the city about a long-term partnership with them, they have been kind enough to continue to provide the water to the Flower Bluff Parker Pool, they're gonna continue to do that at no cost to the pool is the proposal, and again, so that they're a long-term partner in this. So this is truly a real partnership, but as the court knows, we can't put CO money into things that we don't own, and the largest chunk of available funds that I've got for Precinct 4 is CO money like most of us do, and so that's kind of where we are, and I don't know if Flo in the east is here with some folks from the pool, if they'd like to speak, if Councilman Smith would like to speak, and if there's questions from the court, so.
You're welcome to come forward if you'd like. Thank you. Good morning.
Morning Commissioners.
Get, Greg Smith. Greg, would you get to the big mic, please?
Except up to the podium.
New spot here. Greg Smith, Flower Bluff resident, and also District 4 City Corpus Christi Councilman. I think Commissioner Chestney spoke well, he hit all the major points with it. One thing about this pool is part of a larger complex, which was county land at one point in time, and now the city got a hold of it. But also out there is Ethel Irelly Community Center and Senior Center out there, that there's quite a bit of playground equipment, there's some tennis courts with it. So it is a complex. And we all know with the city of Corpus Christi, we have had budget issues. We've got Ann Danish here that has operated that park, the Coastal Bend Aquatics for the last three years, they've done a terrific job, I personally helped them out. They bring swimming to the community, Flower Bluff's surrounded by three sides on water, it's important, also Padre Island with it, so they're providing a valuable service, they've got a history of operating that at a reasonable price, and we appreciate Commissioner Chestney's work on it, we look forward to working with the county, as he said, the devil is in the details, we're just talking on it, we need the authorities to keep going forward with it. And again, thank you all for your service and looking into this matter.
Thank you very much.
Oh, don't leave, don't leave.
Okay.
I've got some questions.
Commissioner Vaughn?
You know how my questions are, you're used to me, so you know you're gonna get the third degree. I'm very familiar with it, the city is trying to get rid of their parks because of maintenance cost and budget cost, but I do know that there is money in parks and rec when you want to do something. Took me two years to get some equipment for some parks, we both know that, we know it. So, the reason I'm asking you is why doesn't the city invest in that pool? Why haven't they done something for that pool? You know, a good deal, it's my understanding they're gonna sell it to the county for a dollar. Well, like you said, the devil's in the details. So, I too want the city and the county to work together, I definitely do, and I want that, them to have the pool. But I'm trying to figure out why they would want the county to take this over, we have less money than you do, by the way, and so why they would want the city to take that on, because obviously the city hasn't done anything with it, and they're not repairing it.
The city of Corpus Christi has invested significantly in Parker Park with it. They, in the last bond, they had about a half million dollars in bond election. They did a lot of aquatics improvements that weren't there, Collier Pool, HEB, West Guth, so that absorbed all the aquatics money with it. So, by renovating, the city at that time was operating eight pools, so I wasn't involved when the decision was made to take Parker, stop operating Parker Pool on there, so I can't speak to that. But I do know that the parks budget is being reduced by $600,000. I think we had a public comment a little bit earlier that it's, the city parks, it's dropping $600,000 with it. But, so, yeah, we do have severe budget constraints, you know me, representing that district, there was a way I could've got that money out of them, I'd have done it.
Well, I think you need to look in your enrichment funds, I was just saying, there's, you know as well as I do, there's some money. But anyway, I don't have a problem with talking about this, you know, going back, and that's what we're gonna prove today, I'm assuming, because like Brent said, the devil's in the details. My concern is that the county is short on budget too, and who's going to maintain and pay for that down the road? You're saying they're going to, but the pool, what he's gonna do, is my understanding, is going to put some money in to repair the pool? Am I correct?
And operate.
And operate. So, is there any way, since y'all are gonna talk about the details later, that we could go into an agreement together where the city puts half up, the county puts half up, and puts some money in for operations down the road? That's just an idea, to me, that's working together.
Well, their contribution at this point is, is they're providing, all the proposal is that they will provide water for free forever, which is a significant cost for running a pool, and that is their partnership part of it. The proposal is on this is to put a one-time amount of CO money to repair, and then a one-time amount from my precinct funds to get them started. The problem that they've had, and I say this not as a knock, I say this as a knock on government, government, it costs more for government to run anything than it does the public sector. If the city or county, or if a governmental entity ran this, there would be all kinds of allocations and overhead costs and so forth. They've been running this pool on a shoestring and running it very well, that's why I believe more and more the models of government is going to be to outsource to public, to private ventures, because I think they can run things more efficiently. This group definitely can run things more efficiently with some constraints, they've been constrained by their revenue streams because they can only charge what all other city pools charge, which is very little, they can increase their revenues there, they can increase their revenues, they've got a budget that show a pretty significant increase in ability to revenue, or to operate, but even if they don't, let's say they don't do a dime more, they're operating in the black for about nothing compared to what, if the city had it on their budget, it would cost. I'm trying to, I'm not trying to, you know, if this was, if this was a city function, it would be $150,000 a year budget, they're running it for 25, you know? So, they're gonna continue to run it in the vein of not having to have all the allocations of the entity on top of it.
Are they maintaining the pool right now?
Yes.
They're doing all the maintenance? City has done nothing? They've just washed their hands of it.
Well, not completely, but I'll let Ann and them talk about some of that.
Yeah, they can explain with them. Personally, I've helped them out in the past, and I want to make perfectly clear here, I'm standing as individual.
Right, it's a proposal.
It is a proposal. City staff is the one that does the negotiation, not Greg Smith, and the nine members of council are the ones that approve it, so.
So today, what we're approving is just for negotiations, correct?
It's to discuss and authorize negotiations related to conveyance of Parker Pool, including in, it's exactly the real property.
And that'll come back to the...
Right, the devil will come back in the details, if you will, but this is an approval of us in concept that if the details can be worked out to convey the pool, just so it's completely clear.
I'm not against it, but I've just, I'm thinking about the county's expenses that, I mean, we're talking about raising taxes, or some are, I'm not, but talking about raising taxes, so I'm thinking if we're gonna put something else on our plate, and if this pool does not work, we end up getting that pool back, kind of like the 750 we spent for the pool at Hillcrest that is not gonna, it'd probably be tore down, that was a throwaway money. And that's all I'm saying, is I just want to make sure that we're looking and saying, okay, if we get that pool back, how are we gonna pay for it? Because we'd have to either close it in or run it, whatever, the county, and there's a reason that the city is giving it over to us, would be considering giving it over to us, so y'all need to think about that.
Very good, any other questions or concerns? Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thanks for being here, all of you, thanks for what you're doing out there. Brent, you want to make a motion?
I didn't know Flo or anybody wanted to...
Flo, you want to speak? I'm sorry, I didn't mean not to let you all speak.
Chloe, 1605 Yorktown, Corpus Christi, Texas.
Good morning.
Several years ago, Stacy Talbert and Mr. Morris came to Flower Bluff and said they were gonna close our pool, and the community said, "Over our dead body." I mean, and we're not gonna close it. This will be a great partnership, we've worked with Mr. Herrera, you need to applaud him, he knows numbers and parks backwards and forwards. We are committed to this project, I mean, we've all lost a lot of sleep over this, I mean, just trying to make, but the numbers, we've had a great summer, our lessons, our lap swimming is growing, our commitment to you is you won't get this pool back, and the city has been very gracious in water and electricity, and that's a big part of a swimming pool. And so, the details, we will get worked out, we, I think there's a commitment from the city. Why they, in the, why Stacy wanted to do that, I'll never understand, but it just, it couldn't happen, because here's the deal, so many of our children, they don't belong to a country club, they can't get downtown or other places. So, we are trying to create an environment to where everybody, kids, have a place to go to stay out of trouble. We have tennis courts, we have basketball, we have our senior center, we're trying to get them involved in water aerobics, we want to get people outside in green space, we want people in the pool exercising, and so, our commitment is, you just, you just, I wish I could even, it's a huge commitment, and we're there to make it work and make you proud, and you will be proud. I'm gonna let Ann say something, because she's, nobody runs a pool pump room better than Ann Danish, so.
I know who to call. My name's Ann Danish, I'm the president of the board, we started a nonprofit, Coastal Bend Friends of Aquatics, and so we're just a band of local small business owners that figured out how to run the pool on $5, really by engaging the community and volunteers and Coast Guard, and it's a 185,000 gallon, seven lane, 25 meter pool with a very rare deep end, they want splash pads, we like the deep end. CCPD is there for them with their scuba diving training and practice, and military has done different exercises as well. But I think we're at 955 kids we've waterproofed so far, this is our third season. Every child that lives near water must know how to swim. It's ridiculous that local kids drown. So, we're turning them into swimmers as fast as we can, and with this assistance, we'll be able to focus on establishing a swim team, a summer league that can compete in the local circuit, and that's it, give the kids something they can have the rest of their life, take it as far as they want to go, but we also have a water aerobics that's becoming very popular, the community loves that, they love the pool open, they love the pool in general, and are just begging us to volunteer and help in any way we can. We've, we have, we figured out how to get it to pay for itself, so we can cover chlorine and payroll, but it's an ancient, there's ancient equipment, the pump room is, you know, the heart of it, of course, and we are doing the best we can, but valves aren't meant to last 40 years, some of them, and we have some upgrades and things that would really help us lower that chlorine bill and the labor to clean the pool and chemicals and things, so it would be a huge hand up, and we would probably make that money last many, many years.
How big is the pool?
It's a seven lane, 25 meter, 185,000 gallons.
Well, I commend you for what you're doing, I think it's great. Because I think every area should have a pool, and like your area at Flower Bluff, our area further north has been neglected too, and we did get some things done for Guth, but as long as I was on council, I never once heard Parker Pool mentioned, not one time, and that's very sad, because the city should have treated them all the same. I am very willing to listen and to hear what the city comes back for, because if it works, I think it's great, be great for your community, but I do want to see what the details are, because in the end, want to protect the county. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Didn't we talk about electricity with them too? I can't, yeah, that was part of, I apologize, I left that out, that was part of the proposal, is that the city will continue to main, will continue to provide the electricity and the water, that's the proposal, this has not been agreed to by anybody here or anybody there. This is the first step, and like I said, we have to have the authority to go forward and start officially negotiating and bringing you back a contract that you're comfortable with, and I think, I think this is gonna be a very positive thing, the city is very motivated, and for whatever reasons, obviously, they don't want to shut it down, but they have budgetary constraints, we have budgetary constraints, but these people have been running it. Once we get this pool up to speed, from what I've been told also, from others that I've talked to that run pools, if, no offense, if this group fell apart, there are other pool vendors that will gladly come in and take over your pool and run it for you as long as it's in good shape. Right now, it's not in good shape, and we've got these wonderful people who've come forward and taken a not-in-good-shape pool and run it, once we get it into good shape, which is what the CO money will be used for, then I think whether it's this group, again, I think it will be this group, but whether it's this group or another group, there are others that will come and take it over and run it as a, as an entity.
Do you have a number that you think you're gonna spend for the CO money?
We, I've gotta get a budget, but yes, it's about $175. And that's rough, don't hold me to that number, because we're still fine tuning that.
I want you to know too, that when we do a budget, we get bids, we don't just, I don't know how that billboard and all that stuff works, we don't go through that. We make phone call after phone call, we get bids, and we, we make sure that we're getting a correct bid, and we're very frugal, and every penny, we pick up pennies off the parking lot, but we're very frugal, and we are committed to making sure that the county isn't taken advantage of, and I know.
And I believe that, and private sector does that very well, getting bids and operating, they do.
And Ann would love to run your park out there.
Have we had a motion on this yet?
I gotta just, I just want to thank, Commissioner, thank you for what you're doing out there for, on this, on the pool, and I want to thank you guys for not giving up, you know, because a lot of kids that really need, even though they're learning how to swim, still drown unfortunately, but, you know, I just want to thank you for doing, all you're doing, but, and anybody knows how to handle this, Edward, I'm sure you got the main man involved, and, you know, and I, you got your money and your budget, I guess, Commissioner's not coming out of general account, so I support that, so, but, I don't know about that startup money, that's one thing I think that I would question, I don't know if you can do...
It's precinct funds, out of my precinct funds, kind of like you did with the park on...
Yeah, but, but it's just for construction, it's not for, I wouldn't give them to, I don't know if you can give money to start up for salaries and all that stuff.
It's not, not CO monies, precinct funds, our, you don't talk about our other precinct funds.
Commissioner, if I may, it becomes county property, then we can spend county funds on county property.
Or construction.
Or constru, for, for maintenance and...
Until we give it back to them?
No, 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 we do it.
No, because it's always gonna, it's like banquete, if you wanted us to go in, banquete, we could go in.
Yeah, same kind of way you do your funds, right, right, right.
Okay, very good.
Go ahead and make a motion.
So moved.
I have a second, any other questions, concerns, public comment? Good call, see none, all in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign. This is a great project, we have some great people behind it, and I think you're gonna make a very big success, and...
Let me just, one thing, before we close, I just want to make sure the city is not, this agreement you have?
We don't have an agreement.
I know, but when you get an agreement, there's electricity, there's water, it's not for five years, or it's 30 years maybe, but, you know, we gotta make sure they're locked in into that, because if not, two years from now, they're gonna come and say, wait a minute.
Good point, and we'll get to look at that agreement before it's approved.
Yep, you'll get to see it all, that's the proposal.
Okeydoke, we're good. Somebody go put something on paper and let's take a look at it.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we're gonna go to regular agenda item 4A3, Ken Trevino's here. Ken, good to see you. How's the job market?
It's good Judge, it's excellent actually.
Good to see you.
Kind of just flipped through. Judge, Commissioners, I appreciate the invitation to be here today, I have some data slides I want to show you first, and then an overview of the organization quickly, and then I can field any questions that you might have. The data slides that we have really shape the methodology and how we target the populations in which we serve, and how we prioritize those populations. You're gonna see a couple of those populations that you recognize here today. As you might expect, y'all have this PowerPoint in front of you? Yes?
Yeah.
So, as you might expect, the industries in our area, hospitality and leisure has the, is a top industry, education and healthcare services, and then you're seeing this non-building construction rising to the top, this was like number nine just two years ago, so this is a climbing industry for us, as you would expect. Top occupations, the same, you're seeing construction and extraction occupations climbing, they're number four, but you do see these sales, food prep, these are hospitality and leisure industry that is very prevalent in our region. Local labor...
Sorry.
Yes, sir.
Are these in handouts? Are they, they're not handouts?
I didn't bring handouts on this, I have a separate handout with Noises County Labor Market Intelligence that I'll hand off to you, that's a deeper dive into all the data that you could want to know about, but I can certainly email it to the court that could send it to you.
Appreciate it, yes.
Our, we serve an 11-county region, 600,000-plus people in the region, 267,000-plus job markets, and you heard what the average salary is, what this company that's getting the abatement, what they're gonna be paying, the average salary for our region right now is 52,000. Above average with millennials in our community, this is people between 20 and 34, 130,000. Actually below average, we hear a lot about the retirement community here in Corpus Christi, Noises County, and the Coastal Bend region, we're actually below the national average in people that are eligible to retire, that are likely to retire, a risk of retirement and very high in racial diversity compared to the national average. This is probably the scariest slide that I want to bring your attention to, and then I'll show you how we're serving this part of the market. You have 11, almost 12% of the population with less than ninth grade diploma, but you have 23% of the population that has no high school diploma at all, and then another, over 50% of our population has a high school degree only, and this really does put us at a disadvantage when we're recruiting. So, with that, I'll tell you... us at a disadvantage when we're recruiting. So, with that, I'll tell you that we work very closely with the EDC. Ian and his team was here today. We're part of their Business Retention and Expansion Program. We're also part of their recruitment program. So, we're supplying the labor market intelligence to the EDC and to Dr. Jim Lee with the university. So, we're all working off the same set of data, so that we're presenting a very clear communication, and not only to our community, but to the global market. But you look at this graph, if you look at this, you're seeing fifty percent of our population with a high school degree only. Now, the associates does include credentials. We work very closely with the Craft Training Center, Delmar College, Coastal Bend College, the two universities. So, more and more people, we need to be funneling them into, and I'm gonna show you how we're doing that, into the craft trades. Our coastal bend labor market is, we're at four point nine percent. We're nearing that space where we're close to full employment. People that want to work have that ability to work. We have fifty-six hundred jobs on this market right now that are going unfilled. This is a combo of a skills gap and wills gap, people that want to work, and maybe in a field that is not in our community, but also a skills gap, people that aren't getting into the right type of occupations to fill these jobs that we have on the market. Fifty-six hundred is a big number. Just a couple of years ago, we were looking closer to two thousand, so that number keeps rising in our community, and you see how the unemployment rate has a drop from six point six percent just two years ago, when Eagle Ford Shell, we were still feeling that impact. Halliburton just posted two hundred and fifty jobs with us, so we're starting to see that pick back up in the western part of our region. Really good news. The same with Weatherford. We're working with Exxon, Flatiron, Dragados, all the major companies on the front end for their recruitment, and I'll show you how we're doing that. Our, we have eight centers throughout the eleven county region, and you see where that traffic is. It's mostly here in Corpus Christi, in our Sunrise Mall location, right here down the street. We really don't do a lot of job fairs. We do a couple of job fairs a year. Mostly, they're targeted hire events, and let me explain what that difference is. A targeted hire event is when your company would come to us and say, look, I'm hiring eight people, and we're going to recruit eight qualified people for you to interview on that day, and the expectation is you're gonna be, be making job offers to those people during that day, and you tell us what your ratio is. You want to interview twenty-four people to the eight people you're gonna hire. So, we're bringing qualified job seekers to the table with a team, business services team, that acts basically as an extension of human resources for the business community. Almost everybody falls into two big buckets. Job seekers is one of our big buckets. You see that we serve thirty-six thousand people plus last year. Twenty-four thousand people entered employment in our region this past year. We serve fifteen hundred plus people with, persons with disabilities, and that was a group you recognized this morning. Very important population to us. We're also serving unemployment claimants, so they come into our office, they're looking for work. You, about sixteen thousand this past year, we returned thirteen thousand of that sixteen thousand back to work, and of the thirteen thousand, we put seventy-six hundred back to work within ten weeks. That's our goal as an organization, is get people to, back to work as quickly as possible. You don't want them to get past that ten-week period where they start to get comfortable out of work. You want them to be, get back into work as quickly as possible. And then I really want to point out these bottom two numbers, one point three million dollars in financial assistance. So, we can basically subsidize people who qualify for financial assistance to go to Delmar College, Craft Training Center, University, Texas A&amp;M, Kingsville, or Corpus Christi, or Coastal Bend College. This is, and it's for high-demand occupations. We're not paying for people who are necessarily going after a liberal arts degree. While that may be in demand, we're really trying to focus on as many people getting into the craft trades as possible. While the people do have a choice, we present labor market intelligence to them on the front end to tell them about how many jobs are on the market, in the degree that they're pursuing, or the certification they're pursuing, and then what those jobs pay, because we have that intelligence. And then you see, we serve thirty-seven hundred veterans, also a target population that you recognized this morning, that's very important to us. The other big bucket is employers. We're feeling like if we serve employers in this community, all these other things are really falling into place. We're currently working with twenty-three hundred plus employers in this region, and they're getting a variety of services from recruiting to job placement, job boards, it's called workinTexas.com. We post a job for them. We can create the, the market for them, basically by recruiting people for them for those positions. They can interview at our shop with the labor market intelligence, help set their wages. Companies like you heard from today will typically come to us and say, what is a process tech making in the region? What's the average salary? What's the fifty percentile, and what's the top ten percent in the region? So, we'll give them those real-time mark, labor market wages, so that they can set their own salaries. And if they want to be more competitive, and what you're hearing a lot, municipalities are using the service too, to try to be as competitive as possible, to keep new county engineers and directors of parks and different programs, because they're leaving to the private sector, especially with all the jobs on the market. In this past year, you had nineteen thousand plus job openings in this region that were available to people in this community. So, that's a lot of jobs. That's way up from where we were just a couple of years ago. Our, a team is very aggressive in going after grants. We have about a twenty million dollar budget, but this last year, we achieved five million dollars plus in additional funding, including one point six million in Hurricane Harvey Relief Initiative, and I'll talk a little bit about that. But I just wanted to show you this, in that these are all serving populations that we're already serving, but it gives us additional resources to serve them. And they're all populations in which you know, youth, youth with disabilities, veterans, career exploration, those impacted by the oil and gas downturn, is that Energy Sector Partnership Grant for four fifty. This is really getting people back into training where they needed training, because they found themselves, so, making six figures and then making nothing, basically overnight. Very successful grant for us and the community. This is a career exploration for kids. This is a, you know, Texas Workforce Commission put these grants out, and what I'll really point out is that this region received nine of the twenty-six grants this last year. It was five million dollars worth of grants. We received one point eight million. This is for dual credit in high schools. This is the future of high schools in not only Coastal Bend, but in America. We have to get these kids trained, get them interested in career at an early age, and you'll see, especially in the rural areas where it's so important, Alice, Beeville, Freer, San Diego, how much money they're able to bring in for their high demand occupations, so they're getting training. A lot of them are graduating with like welding certificates at age eighteen and going straight into industry. Childcare services for those who are working or in training, we offer childcare services. This is a huge barrier to people staying in training or staying at work. Anybody who's an administrator in municipality or anywhere else is very well aware that childcare is a huge issue. On any given day, twenty-four hundred plus kids in care in our region. We have a waitlist of about a thousand more. This is a huge part of our budget. It's about fifty percent of our budget at Workforce Solutions. But let me show you a snapshot of return on investment. Parents pay a fair share of cost on a sliding scale. In this snapshot, the parents paid one point two million dollars for childcare services. We picked up five point three million dollars, and these are for parents that were working, and the wages earned during that same time period was fourteen million dollars. So, this is a great return on investment for the community, for the tax dollars that are coming into the Coastal Bend region, Neoces County, and Corpus Christi. Youth, this is a pocket in which we're really digging in. We're really trying to make a better impact, a higher impact, serving the youth of our region. And you see the bullets of services in which we offering, not only the youth that are registered with us, but youth were going into the high schools and doing career exploration, to tell them about where those jobs are. The jobs that are on the market, the fifty-six hundred jobs that are on the market today, and the ones that are in the future, belong to our community. I'll say that. They belong to these kids. They belong to the families that are right here in Corpus Christi, Neoces County, Coastal Bend, and I believe that in my heart, that we have to do everything we can to prepare them for those jobs moving forward. We have a career expo every year. You see, we had twenty regional high schools. We expect to double that this year. You're gonna get an invitation to this event. I want you to come see this with your own eyes. Exxon was one of the employers that participated last year. They received their first resume from a Cal Allen AP student who went to John Mowbray and said, I'm gonna be a chemical engineer, and I'm gonna graduate here. I'm going to A&amp;M, and I'll be back, because I'm gonna work at Exxon. He walked around with that resume all day long. So, we're coupling the training providers with the employers that are participating in this event, so that an Exxon can say, we're gonna hire a lot of process techs, walk on over to Delmar, because they have a specific program for process technicians, and this is how much you're gonna make once you go through this eighteen-month program. There's the flyer. I have a handout for you that you can take a peek at. Serving youth with disabilities, we have forty-seven youth placed this summer with twenty-two employers. These are youth that, you heard the importance of that from Linda earlier, as one of our partners, but it's very important to give them that opportunity for job experience, practical work experience. It's uplifting. It's a great program that we received some grant funding for, that we hope we can continue in the future. This will be the third year that we've done this summer earn and learn program. We're also operating teacher externship to expand our footprint. So, we're taking, this past year, seventy teachers. This year, we have ninety teachers enrolled. They're currently in a cohort right now, placing these teachers on job sites. They develop lesson plans with like Valero to say where the jobs are gonna be, how, how much those jobs pay, and then they take those, that information, those lesson plans back to the ISDs between eighth and twelfth grade, and have to present that to their students. So, we're trying to create these access points with as many people as we can, ambassadors about where the jobs are in this community. And to date, after this set of ninety that are going through this cohort, we will train three hundred-plus teachers in this field, and you're seeing Education Service Center now has replicated this program. So, we're doubling down on this in our community, which is awesome. Soft skills, one of the highest requested skills outside of the certifications that employers are requesting from us. We're still getting this. It's constant. So, we created a program with Delmar College. It's credentialed by Delmar. It's a four-day program where young people and adults are learning soft skills before they enter the workplace. It's a workplace prep course, basically, for people, and it has seventeen competencies, which Delmar credited, and they basically get a transcript started with Delmar. Many of these people have nothing going in. They, they've never gotten anything like that, and they have a foot in the door with the college to start courses if they'd like, or certification Non-custodial parents, we're working with the Attorney General's Office and the four-D courts, a three-way partnership. You see five point six million dollars since we incepted this program in late two thousand nine. Basically, court mandated putting people to work, mostly dads. I'm not gonna say all dads, but mostly dads, and getting the money in the hands of the right people. And you see five point six million dollars returned to the right hands in our community. A really important program to us, ongoing. It started as a pilot project when I first started this position, and we've been able to fund it over the years. Veterans, the judge has been to this Hiring Red, White, and New. It's a statewide hiring event. Last year, we had eighty employers, almost two hundred veterans that attended, and it is a, for all veterans in our community, we put a two-day hold on any job posting. So, if you were to post a job with us in Work in Texas, we're gonna hold that job for forty-eight hours, and only veterans are gonna be able to view that job and apply for those jobs. We have a lot of employers in this community who specifically seek out veterans. So, we hold those jobs for forty-eight hours, so they have first opportunity to get placed. And we, we also translate their military resumes into civilian resumes, which is, we have a whole software for that. You'd be surprised how different the military resume looks with words and occupations that don't exist in civilian, but we can translate those easily, and we serve thirty-seven hundred plus this past year. And then with Hurricane Harvey, again, one point six million dollars. The bulk of this money is placing people that are impacted by Hurricane Harvey into job sites with municipalities, ISDs, counties, and humanitarian efforts. And we've spent roughly nine hundred thousand dollars in salaries so far with these people that are being placed. But not only are, is it salaries that we're paying for, it's the municipalities that are saving the nine hundred thousand dollars. We're currently working with your Parks Department and placing six people. We have had a little bit of trouble with transportation, I understand, but we're trying to work through that issue. So, you see these two mobile units. We're, we only have one mobile unit. Last Friday, we got word from the Department of Labor that we're gonna get a three hundred fifty thousand dollar grant to purchase our own mobile unit. These are leased from Cameron County and El Paso, but we deployed these in the region just two weeks after the hurricane hit, to offer services to the communities that were most impacted. That's a, the level overview, I guess, Judge. You.
Good job, Ken.
Your meetings and.
Good job, Ken.
I want to hand out real quick.
Thanks, Tyler. Ken, while you're handing those out, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Part of the reason that I think Mr. Gonzalez and I were especially interested in having you come and do this was because, you know, it's an awareness thing. You know, we, I'm not speaking for him. I'm just, I always say it starts like that, because I don't mean to speak for someone else. So, let me just say, part of it, and I did too, was because I think we have to create some awareness that there are all these jobs out there, and that they're not being filled. And they have gone up significantly, as you indicated, from two thousand to fifty-six hundred. And, you know, to kind of ask the questions, is there anything else that we as a community can do to help you add to the efforts that you're already making to, to get the word out, to, you know, to let people know, look, there really are jobs available in this community, and, and there's people that'll train you to do these jobs. Now, you gotta be able to pass a drug test.
Yes.
And, and you know, that's the one you hear forever and ever, amen. So, if you're doing drugs, don't apply. But, you know, if you're not, then, and you need a job, there are these jobs available. And I think, you know, a lot of people still, as good a job as y'all have done with it, may not know what Workforce Solutions is. You know, it's been different names. It was Texas Workforce Commission, I guess, and I.
Employment Commission.
Texas, yeah, right, and so.
Network.
Yeah.
Different.
Worksource.
Right, so, what, what do you think? Is there something we as a community can do, as a Commissioners Court that can do to help, you know, help improve this? Because that's, that's just really kind of sad, that we've got that many jobs out there and can't get them filled.
It's a challenge. It's also the opportunity for us as a community, and I appreciate the offer. We're looking for ambassadors, as many ambassadors as we can get, and you have a constituency, and we have a constituency, and they're the same. But if you have opportunities that you're speaking at a town hall, or any of you are speaking at a town hall, myself or one of my team can be there just to give a five-minute, did you know, these are the jobs that are on the market. We're happy to do that anytime. We do it quite a bit, especially in the rural area, but please utilize that to, as an extension to your constituency for any of your precincts.
You know, that's a good idea, because literally, you know, we do these health fairs, many of us do, and those are great constituent opportunities to do it. Maybe, you know, try to tie you into either the health fairs, or do our own thing, or whatever it may be, because certainly that, that's an opportunity. I know y'all enjoy doing that, and in fact, I want to thank you. You know, you guys were a big help to me, to me and my constituents during the aftermath of Hurricane Harvey. When we got in touch with you, guys had that mobile unit out there that was really helpful, because people could come in when their computers were down, and, you know, they didn't have the opportunities, and y'all brought that mobile unit in there for, for several days in Port Aransas. And so, I don't know that I've ever, you know, I know I thanked you personally or privately, but I don't know if I've ever thanked you publicly for that. So, that's a great opportunity. I mean, maybe that's something we could, you know, bring out and showcase and, and highlight a little bit, because there's gotta be something, you know, that we can do more to get the word out, that there's all these jobs, and we're not filling them. And that's a problem for future employers who are looking down here going, well, we want to go to Corpus Christi, but if they can't fill our jobs, what are we gonna do?
It really is, and we work, obviously, closely with the EDC, and I will say that we're really not the unicorn. This is happening all over the country. But that, that challenge has to be the opportunity to get into the school districts and talk to these kids about staying local, and also talking to our employers about hiring local, and putting the best foot forward with new employers and employers that are thinking about expansion. In the construction industry especially, working with Flatiron Dragados, they weren't really sure about our capability. They wanted to do a test-the-market event with us, and we agreed to do that, and five thousand people showed up for the Flatiron Dragados event. They have since figured out that they had to be more targeted with which jobs were gonna be available, and the timeline, so that it wasn't this mass call. And so, we're working with them on targeted hire events, but I would say to all the Commissioners and the Judge, you can reach out to me personally. If you don't have my email or cell, I can leave those cards with the court administrator, and you can reach out to me personally. If you have one constituent that needs something, or isn't getting what they need from our organization, or look, while looking for a job, we'll get them to the right space.
Mr. Trevino, I'd like, thank you for all you do. You and I have worked together in, in the past, and, but you know, I think that we probably, and I appreciate Chad's bringing up the fact about, you know, talking to groups. talking to groups. You know, you know about our program, Education is our Freedom, the GED Scholarship Program, you know, which, at one point, you know, we, we have an orientation that there's about eighty, ninety kids, students there, and they're all college students now. You know, they were GED at one time, but now they're Delmar, Temu CC, Temu Kingsville, some are getting ready to graduate, you know, and those are great. Sometimes, I know there was three, we had a hard time filling jobs for three of those students that just couldn't find a job. Some, of course, some left Corpus to find a job in Houston and somewhere else. But I think maybe if there's a way that maybe you can partner with, when we have the students there, that population is there, you know, for you to come and talk to, or somebody to come and talk to, and say, this is what we have, this is the jobs, you know, and maybe they know what, how to, how to make the context with you guys and how to work with you as what they're looking, while they're getting ready to graduate. We've got about, probably about sixteen graduates this year, you know, so I don't know if they'll have jobs or not, you know, but.
Commissioner, we're happy to. You let me know when and where. We have a whole team dedicated to do exactly that, so you just let me know when and where, and we'll be there.
Okay, well, I'll be calling you for sure. Thank you very much.
I have a quick question. You said fifty-six-hundred that are unfilled, that's a real concern, but out of that, what is the biggest sector that's unfilled?
Right now, it's construction, extraction, and mining, so.
Really?
All the heavy construction jobs that's going unfilled, and healthcare.
Okay.
Healthcare and heavy construction is where all the jobs are on the market. Thirty percent of that fifty-six-hundred, I was told this morning as I was collecting some data, are in construction.
And I think it's a great idea that you come and speak at some of these events. I have one tonight, you can't make, it's TM Health Fair, but I have one August eleventh for Miller, I'd love for you to do that.
We'd be happy to. If I can leave Tyner my business cards.
Hey, please.
Pass one off, and you can text me or email me that contact information, and we'll make sure we have somebody there to present and have materials.
Okay.
How to get into our programs, and then you don't have to get into one of our programs, just the labor market data sometimes is enough for people to realize that there are all these great paying jobs right here in the coastal bend.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Judge, thank you, Commissioners, thank you.
Good job, thank you very much. Thank you. We're going to hear from LNV on the modifications to the Hilltop, let's see, Community Center, Commissioner's Office, and Bill Bodie Building. Good morning, guys.
I'm going to intro this, Judge, and these next three items we requested, and this is going somewhere, we're at a critical point. I wanted to update the court on where we are with Hilltop, and I wanted to update the court where we are on the courthouse, which is a huge, huge project that gets bigger and bigger every time we delve into it. And, and the third item is Carol Pruitt's contract, and I'm going to suggest to the court what we need to go forward at this point.
Which item, right here? Left, right?
Okay, I think we're ready. Good morning, Commissioners and Judge Neal. My name is Craig Forsyth, I'm the Director of Architecture for LNV, and we are here to give you a little update on the Hilltop Community Center project. Go to our next slide here. Wanted to give you just a quick, brief history, kind of where we have been and where we are headed. The Hilltop facility, as you are aware, is one of the many that's been in line to be upgraded for the current, to meet the current ADA requirements, so we are underway to do that. Excuse me, the Architect of Record, when this first got going back in two thousand and fifteen, JEC Architects was contracted to do the original design. He still, to this day, remains the Architect of Record. LNV was brought on in April of this year to serve as the construction administrator for that. We are overseeing that construction currently with Baldry, Craig Baldry, with Progressive Structures. Right now, Jim Coffin, I was trying to remember his name, Jim is still talking with us on a regular basis. We are making sure that we follow his plans, and of course, our primary objective is to represent you, the county. What we are doing out there, we're doing some upgrades, of course, to the parking. We are, several of the facilities, we're having to do new ramps, replacing doors, making sure that we've got the maneuvering clearances around these doors. Restrooms, of course, are always a big deal, so we're doing major upgrades to the existing restrooms. There's also, I'm sure as many of you are aware, the old kind of standard was to design cabinetry to be at about thirty-six inches, so we're revising that, dropping it down to the thirty-four inches to meet the ADA requirement, as well as having the accessible knee spaces and things that are required. This also involves removal of existing electrical outlets and switches to put them in the proper Again, our primary scope of work out there is the Hilltop Community Center. It's composed of six different wings, wings A, B, C, D, and E. We've got a plan here that kind of shows you what's going on. As part of this, we are also doing upgrades to the Commissioners' Building, Passit-on Building, and the Bill Bodie Building. Bill Bodie Building is the facility that's on the north side of Laredo, is that right? Leopard, not Laredo. Leopard. And that will be the last facility that's going to be upgraded as part of this contract. This is just the larger plan of these areas, and I'd kind of like to discuss with you currently what the projected schedule is for completion of some of these items. Building A is going to be one of the last items, again, along with the Bill Bodie Building. That is projected to be completed in January of two thousand and nineteen. Work right now is currently going on in the B Wing. That, as well as the interior of the C Wing and the E Wing are complete, are projected to be completed in August of this year. We've also got some parking and stuff along with Commissioners' Building that will be completed in August. One of the primary things that have been worked on by the contractor is the Passit-on Building. There are several groups that are, have been or were meeting in that on a regular basis, so we're trying to get that up and running for you. That is slated to be completed by the end of this month, so we continue to work with Progressive Structures to make sure that that, that does meet that deadline. The contractor has notified us that he is trying to complete the entire project within the original scheduled contract time. That should be that first month in two thousand and nineteen. So he is on track. He did have a significant delay of about three months when we did some changeover from JEC Architects during his retirement and then LNV coming on board, but he assures us that he's going to stay on track. Again, I kind of got ahead myself, the Bill Bodie Building. We are doing some new accessible parking up to that facility, and again, that will be first part of next year. Some pictures. This is some of the things that have just taken place. We've had a lot of parking, of course, as stated earlier, ramps, upgrades, interior of the B Wing. This is where we're doing some new restrooms, some additional upgrades, facility, new sidewalks, entries. Picture there on the right, just designate some of the entry requirements to make sure that we get the clearances through for new doors and accessways. Plumbing and electrical, it's been pretty significant as far as the upgrades. Some additional photos. And that's it. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to entertain those.
Where are we on the budget?
The budget, the original budget contract, I believe, was one point four million. We did have a change order at one point. That dealt with some hidden items when they were doing some of the demolition to the existing shower facilities and part of the restroom. That was a very large change order in the amount of eighty-eight thousand that was approved, so that added to it. So I think we're at one point five, roughly, is the contract amount, and we're hoping that we do not have any additional change orders. We're doing the best we can to, to make sure that the contractor stays on track without having to.
So we're.
Some additional.
We're over budget.
I believe it. I don't remember what the original budget was, but.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Judge, the only thing I might add is.
Yeah.
Commissioner Vaughn is very out there. We meet every two weeks, in fact, next week's our next meeting. She's, she's very good at helping us out and what really needs to be done, so we really appreciate her.
I think it's, it's called focus.
Well, I just want to comment, it's looking really good out there, and it, and every time I go, there's somebody out there doing something. So, I mean, thank you guys for what y'all are doing.
Yeah, we have been very pleased with, with Progressive Structures, I think they're doing a fabulous job.
And if y'all note on the Commissioners, I know you probably don't care about this, but the walls are really a pretty nice, clean color.
Yeah.
And the halls, it's making it look bigger.
If you care, we care.
I care. Women care.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for getting on there. Edward, thank you.
And next, Judge, I'd like to present Javier Huerta with CLK Architects to go over briefly what's going on with the courthouse.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. We have a running joke about this project, and we call it the gift that keeps on giving, and it's just incredible. It's just an incredible, I mean, the complexity of this facility has been tremendous. I'm just going to tell you a little bit about, you know, how we got here and the things that have had, have been going on for quite some time. The initial step to start all this was that initial DOJ lawsuit, and we had to go through that lawsuit and try to assess that whole document and try to figure out what it said, what they meant, what they wanted, you know, really what they were asking you to do. Within the statute of ADA, there's a lot of things that, you know, that are, you know, that can, that can be subjective. So we had to go through all that and try to figure out what they really needed, what they wanted. Then we went through and surveyed the entire facility. After surveying the entire facility, which, you know, there's some six thousand items in this building that need to be corrected. There's, well, we did, we couldn't really put all that together into one document, so we need, we needed to utilize technology, and, and so we went ahead and modeled the entire building. Then we needed to come up with solutions for each of those different scenarios. Mind you that there's so many different departments, so many different people, so we had so many different owners of every single space. Everybody had, this is my bathroom, or this is my counter. And so we had to go through all that process of trying to figure out what was the best solution in the best interest of the county, trying to found, find a cost-effective way that the attorney, I mean, the DOJ wanted just a blanket, fix it. So we tried to find at each scenario the most cost-effective way that we can do the minimum amount possible so that we can meet the requirement, but at the same time, not spending a single dollar more than we needed to. By doing that, we also going to trigger some, some questions with the city of Corpus Christi. We have not encountered that because the plans have not gone to the city for permitting, but we went through a whole process of code review of the entire facility. That one, again, it was a mammoth effort to try to figure out how we would justify all the things that are being changed and still comply with the current laws and regulations when this building, I mean, in today's standards. So we have a plan, but that's still yet to be encountered, I mean, or gone through the city. We proposed all our solutions to the county, and the county has had their initial review. Then we had another review by Pruitt, an initial preliminary review by Pruitt. Pruitt is a consultant, ADA consultant that is working for the county. He reviewed the plans one time. He had a whole lot of comments. We reviewed those comments, we responded to those comments, changed the plans if we needed to, and again, the statute, we were trying to do the minimum amount possible, so there were some things that he said, no, that's not enough, you've got to do more. So we went through that process, we reviewed it, I mean, they, Pruitt reviewed it, came back to us, we changed that. Then, then we had the official ADA review. The official ADA review came back with a comment, more comments, even changes back to the, the, the original status. So anyway, it was, it was a huge mess of trying to figure out what, what to do with all those different things. After that effort, after TDLR review, we went ahead and revised the plans again to try to comply now with TDLR. Then after that review, we still had some items that did not, were not going to be workable. So we, we took a trip to Austin with Tyner, and we went to go meet with TDLR. TDLR basically was not very helpful at the end of the day. I mean, they, they kind of said, well, you have to submit a variance. They didn't, they didn't give us, they, they only gave us one concession or one item of the things that we presented to them that they would, you know, it was probably easy, all the other ones, we have to submit a variance, and I'm going to talk to you about some of those items. After that, we came back and, from that meeting with TDLR, we revised again those conditions that were not workable and tried to find a solution based on the discussion with TDLR of how we can navigate and still meet the, the requirement. And, and we, we came out still with some, some items that we need to show to you, where, you know, we have to make a decision. The, the plans, then after the budget issues that you're, the county's having, Tyner asked us to figure out how we could, how we could find alternates out of this project, how do we can find an amount or figure out something that it was, in our eyes, was not essential to, to the, to the upgrades. It's, it is still part of the DOJ report, but it could maybe be delayed. So we created another set of documents, we revised the documents again so that we can create alternates, and so we created an alternate pack, an alternate set of things that we could easily identify, easily pull out, and still meet the requirements of an alternate for municipalities. Currently, the county has received the completed plans. They, they went through and did an initial review. The discussion is that we're going to go to all the different departments and make sure that all the different departments, not that they have a whole lot of, we have a whole lot of flexibility, but at least that they know what we're doing. There's, there's some comments about maybe modifications in, in, in a couple of places, but those are not huge. If you turn the page, the county, just to, just to kind of put it into perspective, and just something FYI, this building is about two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand square feet. If you were trying to build this building today, you'd probably be looking at somewhere in the range of ninety to one-hundred-and-twenty million dollars if you were trying to build this building today. So it's, it's a huge, huge facility. There are sixty-six bathrooms that we're going to be modifying. There's a thousand sixty-six linear feet of countertops that we're going to be modifying. There's nine-hundred-and-two doors that we're touching. Signage, almost every single office gets a new signage because it's not the proper signage, it's not the proper elevation, it's not, and all the different requirements from ADA. Site improvements, we have parking improvements and sidewalk repairs. We have an opinion of probable cause at this point, we have gone, we have done takeoff based on, on these items, and, and there you see the, the base bid currently, it's at about five and a half million dollars for the upgrades to this building. The alternate, it's seven-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand. What the alternate is, is basically all the doors, see, many doors in this facility, there are two eight doors. In order to meet ADA, you've got to have thirty-two inches clear in the width of the door. So many doors in this facility do not meet that requirement. So what we did is all the doors that are not essential to public access, that did not meet that criteria, we pulled out. And so this is the scope of work to do those doors. The next page just kind of tells the story, that's a side plan, kind of tells the story of what the modifications that we're going to be doing to the site. One of the concessions that we needed to figure out, ADA and DOJ didn't quite give us clarity on this, was. us clarity on this, was the parking and being able to consolidate the entire parking into one area for ADA accessibility. Because DOJ had, excuse me, TDLR had had requested for us to provide accessible access all the way across to the south parking and the overflow parking across LePain. And we did not agree with that. So we figured out a way, based on the statute, that we could concentrate all the all the load, everything, all the parking, based on the based on ADA, and they agreed to that. The next one, the next the next page was this page five, is the courtrooms. The courtrooms are the ones, the courtrooms in floors seven through nine are the ones that are really difficult, not only in cost, but in just feasibility. The DOJ wants the courtrooms to be accessible. So what what does that mean? It means that currently the courtrooms are elevated. The witness clerks, recorders are elevated at different levels, and then judge sits at a different level yet. So in order to make all of that compliant, we would probably take up at least half of that room in ramps. So it's impossible. And so one of the one of the strategies that we talked to TDLR was to create a courtroom policy that we could implement for the courthouse where we would design three, about three three courtrooms in in the building that would be accessible. And TDLR said that there was no such thing, but we can submit a a request. Tyner, after discussions with the other entity in 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 Galveston, they did something similar and were able to achieve that with DOJ. So that's something yet that has to be resolved. You want to speak of that?
McLennan County. It was McLennan County. They adopted an accessible courtroom policy. And when Javier's done, I'm going to expand on that when we lead up to the Pruitt item.
Okay.
So this this slide just basically kind of tells the story and in the technicalities of, you know, what the what the code says and and the issues with the courtroom. The next page is what the proposed solution is for courtrooms. Courtrooms 404, 403, and and 5, 502. The idea is to to modify those courtrooms so that they can be accessible to the public and convertible for a judge, should a judge be disabled and need a need accommodation. What that means is that it would have the space where a lift can be installed. Currently, we don't have the lift in the scope of work, but the space and all the electrical would be in there so that at whenever the time comes, which is part of the statute, you're allowed to do that, when the time comes, if you need it, we can go ahead and slide it in now. If it's something that you want to do now, we can do it now, but currently we're trying to watch the dollars. And so this slide just kind of shows you one courtroom and how we're going to resolve that and keep it keep it accessible. The other the other big issue is cells. And the cells in the courtroom are not accessible. The courts basically have two two cells per floor for four courts, holding cells. And we we went through a different exercises trying to make those those two, those those cells accessible to meet all the requirements of accessibility and then and then also leave you the functionality to two cells per per floor. It's impossible. It's it's not impossible to meet those the ADA requirements and and be practical for you. So the only option is to convert the two existing cells and convert that into one, which would leave you, you would lose 50% capacity in your holdings. That item has been put on hold. We do not have a solution. TDLR does not have any, they basically say that you you must provide that. DOJ had it in their list. We want to also try to do a some sort of a a a policy where we could maybe make one or two floors accessible and and make that, you know, try to try achieve that. So we're going to, we're going to try to also request a variance for that and, you know, figure figure that out with courtroom or holding cell policy.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir.
On that one cell, it would be big enough, you can't put anything across it like a like a barrier, not not another wall, but I'm saying, like a, like a, I don't know, like a chain link, chain link, something, just to divide it so you can have both courts? I mean.
The the space with all the requirements that 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 they, I mean, that if you look at the graphic.
It's only taking very little space to put a divider there, you know? It's not taking that much space, you know?
Well. As far as as far as the 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 sheriff and the requirements of this holding cells, prisoners cannot cannot engage, cannot have contact with each other. And 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 there's issues with safety of the prisoner with chain link. So and, you know, so there's different issues, you know, that they're not possible to to do in a holding cell. I don't think a chain link is is a possibility. Besides, it won't, it's only going to save us maybe three or four inches in width. So it's not not really going to be advantageous. The next, the next slide or the next page is another item. And this one is the only one that we came back from 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 TDLR with them saying that yes, they could they could approve a policy as long as we submit for a variance for this one. And this one is kind of, I'm going to call it petty, but DOJ and ADA, so we have two books that we're following. ADA is American Disabilities Act and TAS is Texas Accessibility Standards. So TAS incorporated ADA at some point not too long ago, 2012. And but there were some things that did, they didn't. And one of the things that they didn't is they don't have a provision. DOJ has a provision where you can put signage and tell people where an accessible bathroom is. TAS does not. So TAS wants all the restrooms in 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 the in the first, second, and third floor next to the elevators to be upgraded. What we did is we only upgraded the adjacent restrooms that you have already assigned as ADA, which have deficiencies that that are being improved. But those restrooms with signage, just letting the the public know that's where the accessible restroom is, was a simple solution, but we have to request a variance for that one. The next step is, like I said, we we need to just do a final review with with the county and and the departments, process the variances, and finalize the big package and technical specifications so that we can go out for bids.
Questions? Yes, Judge. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Thanks for working on this complicated issue for us and for the taxpayers. I know you mentioned on the TAS that that they, so they adopted some or all of the DOJ DOJ standards?
So the the challenge here is this. DOJ had a list of specific items, right?
Right.
And then they they gave you a lot of blanket items. If, for example, a door, all doors must comply, right? So all doors must comply. And so in in that process of all doors must comply, we had to go through and and figure out what what to do and what doors didn't comply. TDLR is the Texas entity that is going to do the the inspection. Now Pruitt, this is very kind of confusing, but Pruitt is is not only doing plan review for us, but he's also the DOJ's or
Independent licensed architect.
Independent licensed architect. So by by using Pruitt, we're hoping that that those things that are not completely in accordance with each other are 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 resolved. You know, through this process, we have had, you know, where DOJ is one side and TAS is another, we have found a solution that can meet both for the majority of the things. Just with those items that we're talking about, those three different areas and courtrooms is a big one, and cells, but those have not been resolved and we still need to, even if we get TDLR acceptance, we have to go to DOJ and get them to also accept. It's two different efforts.
But so TDLR can operate independently? They have to have to follow DOJ whatever they're set or is that some
Separate.
Or separate?
Separate.
So they may agree on some issues, but others they may not?
Yeah.
And and so have you have you seen, and since taking on the scope of this project, have you seen there be any standards that have made it more difficult for us to meet? Or have they been more, have we been able to work with them a lot easier than DOJ?
We have not had direct contact with DOJ. Pruitt has been our
Okay, so it's just through Pruitt that's just taking on the
He's he's been, he's been our, you know, and and Pruitt has been very thorough because he he does not want to pick a fight with DOJ.
No one does, right?
Yeah.
I will.
Yeah. Well.
Well, we can try and hopefully we'll get back to or
We are, we are going to ask for a large number of variances in here, but John, and you weren't here, we got started this war, unfortunately, but what we have found out is the DOJ standards that they make us adhere to are not necessarily the federal standards. They have their own set. And so that has really complicated things for us. And our goal, as I leave and you all continue this battle, and Tyner and I have had this discussion a number of times with our architects, is to get as many variances as we can for doors, for instance, you know? The doors just are impossible.
That's correct. That's the
Situation.
That's the additive alternative on on the plans.
Yep.
That could be a million dollars right there.
Right. So there there are millions of dollars of things we're going to have to go back and get, try to get some kind of variance on. But the key here is these courtrooms. And we're going to have to get them to approve us to fix just one or two or three courtrooms. Fixing 13 courtrooms would absolutely be impossible.
We don't know how to fix them, Judge.
We can, they can't be fixed.
Can't be fixed.
Can't be fixed.
And me and Javier and Carol Pruitt spent three hours one afternoon in a courtroom.
Can't be fixed.
And we couldn't, we couldn't figure out how to do it.
Because you end up with a room full of ramps.
Well, and tripping, tripping hazards.
And everything. So anyway, go ahead, Tyner.
So our plan now is to to get with the departments. Juan Pimentel has marked up his first set of plans. The plan book is 94 pages long. This is a very tedious project. We were meeting with the motor vehicle department yesterday because they have an employee that we want to try and assist. And they were looking at the plans and they they said, this is not going to work for us, the the plans as they existed. So we, Juan made a decision, we're going to go back to every department to make sure they understand exactly what they're getting. And and we're going to take our time and and make sure we do this right. And another thing that Juan told me he wants to get get control over, we go out for bid on this project, we don't want a bunch of change orders. What's going to happen? We start taking these restrooms out and we're going to find corroded pipes and it's going to be, well, while you got it got it open, this corroded pipe needs to be replaced. And so there's a bunch of contingencies that we need to try and get a handle on before we go out for bid. It's going to be tedious, we're going to work hard. And and, you know, this this work has to occur at night. It has to occur where our departments can continue to operate. And so it's going to be very tedious, the 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 planning on on how this is going to work. And so Juan promised me that we're going to very tediously go through the plans, go through the departments, and and make sure that we know exactly what's going to happen when we go out for bid.
Great job. I mean, you guys, I know how tough this is. And it's get, every time you lift a rock, there's 14 snakes under, as you said, the gift that keeps on giving. But when this courthouse was designed in 1978, or whatever it was, we didn't have all of these things. And we we have a functional courthouse that has served the public extremely well. But as you say, if we were to build it today, it'd be a hundred million dollar project. Yep, go ahead.
So
Okay.
So Kristen and I, in the coming weeks, are going to have a low-level conversation with the DOJ. To to tell them, well, I'm sorry, just between us and our investigator, just between us and our investigator. And we're going to lay everything out and we're going to see if they're willing to work with us on moving forward. And and if they have any tips on us moving forward. And so we just, this is very tedious, we don't want to make any mistakes. And we want to make sure all the departments understand what they're getting.
Okay.
Can I make a comment, Judge?
Yeah.
I just want to say thank you because I I I'm surprised you aren't pulling your hair out right now.
We are.
I'm sure you are, so it's difficult to work with them, I'm sure. But when Yeah. And when Juan came up earlier, I didn't take the time to comment, but I think we really hit a home run with you. So I think we can all pat ourselves on the back up here. I think that was a great hire. So glad you're here.
Thank you.
And I agree with that, Commissioner. He's he's really been marking things up, sending things back and and taking control. And so I'm I'm so glad that he's willing to jump into this project with us.
This is a two or three-year project.
Absolutely.
Court's over. Thank you.
So that brings us to the next item and and the Carol Pruitt item, his contract expired in March because the whole settlement agreement was going to be over. But the fact of the matter is, Carol Pruitt's bunch has done the plan review on Hilltop Community Center. It makes sense that we keep him on to inspect Hilltop when it's done. He's also done the plan review, and I know a lot of people have a lot of heartache with the independent licensed architect, but he did the plan review on the courthouse as well. Carol Pruitt's indicated to me that he's going to retire in the spring, but he has agreed to stay with the with the New Aces County. And so what we're proposing is a two-year contract that'll, we'll know exactly where we are in two years or before the end of two years, but we're recommending approval of this. It's about 40,000 a year, 80,000.
So can you explain to us why we have to have him again, just so that everybody's clear? Because certainly haven't enjoyed working with this organization. So if I'm going to pay for my lack of enjoyment, I'd like to be explained again so we all know.
Early on, Commissioner, we did literally a statewide search, if not a nationwide search. And this is the only lead that we got. There was somebody local from WKMC, and they started looking at this thing close and they said, no, I don't want to do that. This is, this may be the only person that we, that that we might have found. Anyway, the long and short of it is, he he is an architect and he's also a registered accessibility specialist, and that's what the DOJ wanted.
Right. So my understanding, and that's that's what I remember, is we have to have his specific designation or someone like him
That's correct.
Leading this, or they won't deal with us, or they won't approve or whatever. And then then we can ship out to the local guys that we, like we've done, the, I'll say the real work, because they're doing the real work. But that's, we have to have, whatever you just called.
He he was formally approved by the Department of Justice.
Right. And and he's got, what is the certification again? What's it called?
Well, he's not not only a licensed architect, he's also a registered accessibility specialist.
So and and the DOJ requires us to have a registered accessibility specialist designated in our, on our team?
They did. Now, I've heard of other counties since using registered accessibility specialists. And we talked about that.
That aren't architect.
And we talked about asking the DOJ that. But what I'm suggesting at this point in time, since Pruitt's done the plan reviews and everything on Hilltop and the courthouse, we just stick with it.
Right. But what you're saying is a registered disability, a registered
Accessibility.
Accessibility person could be not an architect? Or
That is, that is correct.
Okay, so other counties sometimes use
Well, let me, let me suggest to you, they're professionals under TDLR state law, not DOJ. Pruitt understands DOJ. That's one of the huge differences. But but I've heard of other counties like McLennan, they couldn't find an ILA and they found a local architecture firm that did have a RAS, and I think they technically got the DOJ to approve their registered accessibility specialist.
We don't have a local RAS, other than the one you talked to that doesn't want to do it.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. So other than going out and trying to find a whole brand-new person who would have a huge upside learning curve, who's going to tell us the same things this guy tells us? Probably
That's correct.
Maybe in a little different, nicer way, but we're still not going to, we're not going to like whoever we get that does this job.
Agree with that, Commissioner.
Basically, they're they're telling us, anyway, okay, that's fine.
We know, we feel like, we feel, we feel like you, Commissioner. We're in the same boat, but at this point, I think he knows what's going on.
The devil
That's correct.
You know, he knows.
And and I want to remind the court that, just real quick, I realize we've got to destroy Law Enforcement Center in Port Aransas. And, and I, I wanna remind the court that, um, just real quick, I realize we've gotta destroy Law Enforcement Center in Port Aransas. And as we bring all the, the Hurricane Harvey damaged facilities back, those have to be ADA compatible. And, and, you know, I'm just suggesting that we, you know, not only are, are we only gonna concentrate on the courthouse in Hilltop and getting done, seeing where we are, but as we rebuild after Harvey, we're gonna have ADA issues as well.
And, and this is sort of germane. How do we, we don't use Ms. Lyons on these projects very much anymore, right?
She, no, not much on this. And, and I tell you what, we haven't received an invoice from her in a long time and.
Cause it's only on a as, as, as-called basis now.
Right.
I just wanna, okay, that's what we discussed. Okay, alright, thank you.
Look, I, I'm gonna thank Tyner. Tyner has become this specialist for us the last three years. And as we really get into these bigger buildings like the courthouse, this is gonna be a, something for future. It's gonna take a lot of Tyner's time and a lot of time with the staff. And, and I wanna thank you everybody for this. The, the key word here is just patience. We're, we're simply going to have to have patience as the county moves forward. And, and getting these variants is gonna be very, very, very important. And so, good luck, guys, and I know you'll do a good job. And thanks for bringing this to us. And Juan, thank you for being involved in this. It's gonna work. It's gonna work. It's gonna, it's gonna take time and you're gonna have to work it out, but it'll work. And, and, uh, at the end of the day, we're gonna be serving the needs of this community and wait for generations. So, thank you. All right, uh, I need a motion on item six, please. All right, I have a motion, a second. See no comment, all in favor, six, five, saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, how about, um, LA in engineering? Horace Caldwell-Pier. All right, Scott, good morning.
Good morning.
How are you today?
I'm, I'm good. I'm glad I'm finally up here. Recommend approval.
Just as a point of quick clarification, this is the money that Scott raised with the Dell Foundation to do the long, to do the, the long-term structural inspection, following up to the short-term that we did. So move approval.
I need a second.
Second.
I need a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Good job.
Have a good day, sir. Lunchtime.
You bet. Ladies and gentlemen, I just received word that Judge Valderras passed away about thirty minutes ago. So, uh, for his family and all of those who knew him well, we certainly want to remember him and the great job that he did here in New Oasis County. Uh, they'll begin to work on that. For the court's, uh, information, on the next court meeting, we will have an agenda item to appoint a successor in that position. So we'll move on that very, very, very quickly. And, and I think you all know, my suggestion is we have someone elected to that position. And that's probably gonna be my recommendation. But it'll be on the agenda next meeting now that, and unfortunately, we did receive word just a few minutes ago about the judge. So we'll remember the judge and all his contribute. He had a, they had a nice segment on him, I think, on Channel Three or Channel Six last night, and it was done very well. Okay, uh, number eight, we've done. Number nine, um, it's issue Brent, London, London School District.
Yeah.
Okay, you gonna take that?
Uh, this is a similar project, as we discussed, uh, earlier. Uh, and this also is in the, um, uh, planning stages in the sense that, uh, their, their London School Board hasn't voted on either. Uh, this is to partner with the London Independent School District to, uh, convey real property that they own, to establish a, a county park in that area, again, similar to what Commissioner Gonzalez has done before with the Bankett program. And they will also be, uh, providing significant cash influx as well as the land. And then they will run it one hundred percent. So this, the school district will run it. We will have nothing to do. Again, there's no, uh, general fund pull. Um, and, um, I think we're moving in the right direction on that one. But I haven't gotten a vote on that one from the London School Board yet either. Uh, but wanna, again, bring it to the court's attention, discuss it, uh, answer any questions, and then move that one forward, similar to the last one.
Make a motion.
Can I ask a question?
Question.
What is it you're gonna build?
It's a, uh, it'll be, it'll be a county park, but it's basically a baseball and softball facility that then London will use as their, uh, baseball and softball facility, and then, uh, others in the county will be able to use as well.
It'll be renovating existing structures that are there.
They have stuff out there already?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Number ten, Petronilla. Edward, do you know about this? Edward, you're in charge of everything. I know this is Jag, but, uh, yeah.
Commissioner, if you wanna. Go ahead, go ahead. Again, you know, we built the multipurpose center in Bishop, and it's been used, you know, every day, uh, for different, different projects. This one here in Petronilla, it's a, it's a little different. The city council in Petronilla, uh, uh, we met and we've been meeting two, three times. And, uh, they wanna do something with that land they have there in the curve, where they're little storied, like Petronilla Elementary School. And I think this center there will probably service at least six colonias that I have there that are clustered. Uh, Terra Grande, Petronilla number five, one and two, and, and, uh, Fiesta Ranch, I mean, uh, Fiesta. Uh, so we have, you know, they're bringing some programs out there, some services out there for those colonial people that can't, can't get out. And the good thing about it is, uh, ask them how much money they had, how much money can they put in? So, uh, they, they only had like two hundred thousand dollars in their account, but they wanted to put in a hundred and fifty thousand, you know? So, uh, well, that's good, you know? So that cuts my money down to what I was gonna spend to, to, uh, to renovate, to build a structure out there. But they want also, we listened back to them and they, uh, they wanna have, uh, their, uh, city council court there. They wanna have an office there. So, uh, they'll be able to use it just, uh, in conjunction with us using it also.
Consideration, judges, they're going to maintain and pay for all the utilities and operate.
Who would own the building?
County would own the building. Um, we have plans, uh, with Christopher Boyce out there. It also serves our needs as far as a, a drop-off site if we ever need to, uh, deliver in case of emergency. We, we've got plans for that. Christopher's gonna look at getting a generator for us out there. So it's gonna be part of our overall emergency management plan as well.
Good. You recommend this?
Yes, sir.
You wanna make a motion?
Judge.
Question?
Yeah, well, I have a question. I'm just a little confused. I didn't know the county went around and built buildings and built all this stuff on property, sometimes property. Is that what we do? We do a lot of this and that just adds to what we take care of? I'm not being negative, I'm just asking.
Commissioner, generally, through my, I've been here thirty years and our experience has been, the only time we do that is as long as we have an agreement that says we're not gonna maintain it. And generally, we've been good at picking our partners. Because like a school district, like in Bankett's case, we've been doing it for eight, ten years now. They don't wanna give it up because that's their main ball fields. We get the benefit from it because the community gets to use it as, as a park, but we don't have to maintain it. So that's, when we know we have a partner like that, we know that we're never gonna take that park over. In that case, we do have a portion of it that we still take care of, which is the county property, but it's always been a park. In this case, the same thing's gonna apply. We're not, we're gonna have operations there. We're gonna have, uh, programs that commissioners set up that are gonna be there, but we're not going to pay anything towards maintaining it. We're gonna still be responsible for it, but the, the, the city's not gonna wanna give up their, an office where they house out of.
So do we provide the insurance for the building?
They would.
They, they do all of that.
They do everything.
Everything. And, and the good thing about it, Commissioner, you know, this, of course, if you got money in your budget, you can do those things, right? So this is how we start.
And I understand that, but in the end, it's still.
But it, but it services in the rural areas different because there's no, they don't have, they have to come in a corpus for services.
And I get that, but in the end, it's the county's money, period, where they're.
Well, it's their money. It's their money, too.
And I hear that.
You know, I mean, this is their taxpayers' money, too. So they're, they're taxpayers, so.
They, and they are, but my concern is, is just that we go building all these buildings and it adds to what we pay and what we upkeep. And I don't care whose area it's in.
We're not gonna add to the upkeep because they're gonna do it. And that's the only thing you have to do is to make sure they're gonna do it. That's the agreement.
I guess that's gonna be in the pudding, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Stir it up a lot.
All right. So what do we want here? We want, is there a vote to be, need to be taken? That says discuss and consider, um, authorize negotiations. That's the motion, right? All right, make that motion, Joe.
I'm moving.
Uh, somebody made a second a while ago. Okay, here it is, right here, John did. All in favor, signify, saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Carolyn, you've got some great questions.
Well.
No, no, I'm serious. Those are great questions. And, um, as we get farther into the budget, some of this, we get a little clearer. Not, not a lot of it, but some of it will. But you're, those are great questions and they need to be asked. So thank you for doing that. All right, number eleven.
The last one, I, I don't wanna ask anything. Carol may jump on me. I'm kidding, Commissioner. No, this, actually, Judge, this is something that's been, uh, ongoing for, for many years. My predecessor, Commissioner Ortiz, had a, a, um, had always worked with Robstown ISD to utilize the old show barn, um, and use the outdoor space, uh, for pins, because the Ag program out of Robstown ISD didn't have a facility. We had a facility. And so now we're kinda moving forward into working inside the building to utilize the building, kinda bring it new life. Um, there re- really wouldn't be or won't be, uh, anything on, on our end as far as putting in, other than we're hoping to go into, um, uh, negotiations in some sort of a future agreement with Robstown ISD, uh, to, uh, to utilize this show barn, uh, for their Ag program and, and get more kids involved and, and active in that. Uh, so we have Mr. Gonzalez here, who's, uh, the interim superintendent, who we've been visiting with for, for several meetings now. And so, um, wanna welcome him. And anything you wanna add to?
Morning.
I was about to say morning, but it's afternoon now.
Well, it is, isn't it?
Uh, thank you, John. Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, we've used the outside pins before. And what we're proposing to y'all is for y'all to lease, leases the Ag barn, the old show barn, for a dollar a year for five years.
We'll, we'll, we'll figure that out. We didn't say dollar amounts, but we'll, we'll get there.
Dollar sounds good to me.
It, it would sound good to you. I don't know. We'll see about that, Judge.
But, uh, what, what we will do also is, uh, we're prepared immediately, once we, you know, finalize this as soon as possible, to put in a hundred thousand dollars to, you know, power wash the, the outside, clean it up, put in some of those, some of those big-ass fans. Uh, do the, take care of the electric bill, the water bill, and set up the pins for our kids so they can, we have about twenty or so kids.
What kind of fans were those? What kind of fans did you say those were?
Big-ass fans. That is the name.
I was just curious. I didn't.
That's what they are. I, I thought.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
They really are huge, man. That is our name.
It should be a brand, right?
Large fan.
That's a big, it's, hey, it's a brand. It's late in the day. Let's go. I'm good.
Anyway, so we would invest dollars in making it so that it's a secure, good place for our students to house their animals out of the elements and the heat and, and the, and the, and the cold. Uh, we will take care of it. We'll ensure it appropriately. We'll do what, whatever is appropriate so there's no costing incurred on part of the county. That, that, you know, you know, that came, that's very clear to me. And I understand if I was in your shoes, I'd be the same way. You know, I'm the interim superintendent. I work for, actually, I'm a retired CFO from CCISD, Flower Bluff. I work for Robstown because I was asked by my employer, Tasby, to take leave of absence and be there while they find their superintendent. So I'm a numbers guy. And what, what I was putting on my desk was, we don't have a place for our students. So, you know, we saw the Ag barn as not in use. Uh, it, we're willing to pay to, to get it up in good running condition. There's some storage stuff in there. You don't have to move it out. We only have about twenty kids. We'll secure that on one side. Uh, we'll, like I said, we'll power wash it and paint it, and we'll mow the lawn and pay the electric bill, pay the water bill.
Hey, I think it's a great idea to use that old building, you know, if Robstown can use, I think it's great. But let me ask you, cause that building's old, old. Is the inside in decent shape?
Pretty good. One of the things we're gonna do, we're gonna renovate the restrooms. That's gotta be cleaned up and redone. And when, you know, the, in order to put the fans in, it'll be our responsibility to make sure we have proper power coming to it. So the short, the short answer is, I don't know. But we'll do, it won't be, it won't cost the county to do the things we're planning on doing.
That's what I wanna hear. Okay.
And, and, and won't cost the county, and actually, we'll pay you a dollar a year.
Or more. Need a motion, John.
One of the, one of the other judges before, one of the other benefits is, um, will we allow us to shift personnel to the county judge's Lloyd Neil Terminal, Terminal for maintenance? I, I talked to Juan about that. That's right. And, and we, cause we have dedicated staff there already at the show barn just to maintain.
That's right.
A facility we're not really using. And so that staff can then even part-time start utilizing them as the, as we see more traffic pickup there at the airport and be able to dedicate keeping those grounds, you know, safe and clean, so.
Make a motion.
So my motion, uh, Judge, to go, go into negotiations with Robstown ISD.
All right, all right, we got a second. Comments? Here's seen, and all in favor. Aye, opposed, same sign. Thank you. Go get some of those large fans. I'm sure you did. Okay, Grant.
Good afternoon. Okay, so what you have before you is a ratify of a notice of grant award from the Texas Veterans Commission for our two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen general assistance grant. It is a ratify, so normally we do have it on the consent agenda, but we wanted to kinda present it in public to kind of brag a little about ourselves because we are proud to say that this is our sixth grant award for this project. And this project was designed to, uh, for limited emergency financial assistance for veterans, their surviving spouses and dependents. And this project helps with, I know some of you are familiar with it, but some aren't. Um, so this project helps with, uh, rent and mortgage, um, payments, utilities such as water, electricity. Um, we also have, uh, bus passes and bus fare for certain situations that we help veterans with, as well as a few, a food and hygiene pantry that's run through the veteran services. Um, so this project is unique in that, with the award is a four, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's no cash match. And we're, um, our county is unique in that all of the money goes to direct client services. In other words, we are using county staff, um, to run the project and nothing is being spent on salaries or benefits. We're using, you know, we have Martin and Stephanie in Veteran Services, Rebecca and Sal and, you know, her staff in, uh, social services. We run, we help with the, uh, financial and the quarterly reporting, as well as the auditor's office, um, helps us out with that. So, um, we're very proud of that. It, we're a great collaborative team. Um, and, uh, with that, every time we apply, we are asked to present, uh, to their advisory board. And, um, for the past couple of years, Sal has been, uh, very gracious in donating his talents, um, to us in providing a video. So rather than going up there and hearing us, you know, do our spiel, um, Sal presents a video narrated by Stephanie from Veteran Services. So we'd like to present that. It's three minutes. I know.
Go ahead, please. Uh, let me tell you, this, this is a great example of what happens in this county when we get all the various people working together.
One thousand one hundred and sixty-six square miles, which includes a population of over three hundred and sixty thousand and approximately twenty-seven thousand of that populace are veterans. In two thousand seventeen, New Oasis County was awarded one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for veterans assistance. And with that grant, we have been able to continue our success at preventing homeless descendants spare in our veterans, their families, and survivors by helping with food, transportation, utility, and rent or mortgage payments. Since we were first granted these funds, one of our goals was to make a long-lasting effect on those reserved to help them rise above their hardships and back to self-sufficiency.
Those services have been, I would've been out on the street like, uh, my brother and sister. I'm glad that I will need it now, but I'm also glad that it's out there for others. To me is, um, without this kind of service, there's a lot of veterans who would be hurt. And they wonder losing everything, their self-respect, their dignity, and all that. But that's where I think it's the most important part of self-care. And, uh, I'm glad that I didn't have to use it again, but at the same time, I'm glad it's there for someone else.
This grant also allows New Oasis County to supply bus passes to veterans who are looking for work or need to get back and forth to medical appointments. We are also able to keep our food and hygiene pantry stocked to ensure veterans and their families will not go without. These funds have been especially helpful to veterans in the wake of Hurricane Harvey.
We had to evacuate our home. And it was after that we came back to the home and we found ourselves, uh, seeing the, um, this extract under our clothing, our property, and our personal property. We had lost our identity. We were displaced from the home. Thankfully, we came to the Veterans Office and they, they organized through the program and helped with what we felt that we, which was our financial needs. Because we weren't able to afford any type of housing, and it was just, uh, pay our, our bills.
This is just a small sample of the tremendous success we have had from our last award. And with your continued support by approving our current grant application, New Oasis County can continue to be successful getting our veterans back on their feet. Our veterans grant program has become a crucial part of our function to help veterans and their families in their time of need. Our veterans assistance grant program is one of the most important safety nets for New Oasis County veterans. And most assuredly, a program our struggling veterans cannot bear to lose.
Thank you, Sal.
Very good.
So obviously, they liked our video so much that, um, they gave us our sixth grant award. So.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
We're very excited, we're looking forward to another successful year. We made a couple of little adjustments just because I know last month we did a big push to finish the grant funds that we had currently available and now this starts a whole new funding cycle. It's from July of this year to June of next year, so, and we will be applying again this year, so I don't know if Martin wants to share, I know they have.
Good job, guys. Thank you. By the way, Sal move if I can get a second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, poll same sign. Once again, thank you. And by the way, moving all of you all over there together helped, didn't it? Makes a big difference.
Have you played it now?
Thank you. Pursing.
Good afternoon Judge, Commissioners. First item for purchasing is the award for the Nuasis County Airport Water Line Extension. We went out for bid, the scope of the work, it was, is to install a two thousand one hundred and ninety-seven linear foot water line and four fire hydrants. We received fourteen bids, there was a big interest in this project. And the recommendation is to award to the lowest bidder Bridges Specialty Inc. in the amount of sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Questions? Does everybody understand what we're doing here? Explain very quickly what we're doing here. We're working with the city of Robstown on this.
The city of Robstown and eyes to put in the water line out at the airport. The project is to take sixty working days and it came in under the estimate, the estimate had been a hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and it's at, the low bid came in at sixty-nine.
Very good.
Is this the local group, Bridges, do you know? Just curious.
Bridges Specialty, yes, they have a presence here at the county.
I was really amazed at the high bid compared to the low bid as it went down.
Yes ma'am.
So, that's good.
Are we getting, are you noticing in bids like this Elsa, are we getting to the point where hopefully we'll start getting less? More interest and lower under the estimated cost?
On some, yes, it depends on the bids, on what we're bidding out, the scope of work. In a little bit, I'm going to talk about the fire system out at the jail and that one is severely above the estimated cost.
And that's more kind of maybe technology and stuff and this one's more kind of construction related. And I've shared this story before when I was on, with City of Corpus Christi on the council and I think Brian had been there and we, we were in a, the economy was in a way that we were getting bids to severely underbidding, which helped us be able to fund other projects. And so I'm hoping maybe we'll get to that or at least that it all evens out if we are getting other projects that are maybe over. But that's at least encouraging for us that we can hopefully get, I'm just surprised also at that huge swing between three hundred and three thousand to sixty-nine thousand. I know we've seen that in some of our projects where there's just a big discrepancy, but I'm glad we're under.
Just to assure the court, the engineering company did review the lowest bid, the three lowest, to confirm that their pricing was not out of line for the work that needed to be done and they came back with a positive recommendation to Bridges Specialty.
Need a motion.
Come on.
Second.
I have a second. Seen a discussion, all in favor? Aye, poll same sign, number two.
Number two is, again back at the airport, it is for, the award for the airport apron expansion. The base work to be done is to resurface the existing apron that's out at the airport with lime-treated, upgraded, geo-grade, geo-grade placed, modified T-A-G-R-one-two flex base. And so we're resurfacing that area and also there's an additive piece to this base bid and it's to expand the apron to a bigger size. The property's there, it just, it would need just additional groundwork to be done and then to lay down the material for that space. This project is to take forty-five working days. We received eight bids for this, for this project. And the recommendation would be to award to Garrett Construction Company for three hundred and ninety-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety cents. This project also, and this is to do both, both the base bid and the alternate bid. It came in under the estimated total cost, the estimate from the engineers was for four hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and eighty-four. So this also is lower than the engineer's estimate.
Questions? Need a motion. There's a motion. Got a second? See no comment, all in favor? Aye, poll same sign, thank you.
Okay. So here is the, the big project. It is the award for the McKenzie Jail Annex for the fire alarm system replacement project. The scope of work is, on this project is to replace the existing fire alarm system installed in the jail and the SATF, that's the Substance Abuse Treatment Facility, portion of the McKenzie Jail Annex with two new fire alarm systems. And we received three bids. This is a rebid, the first time we bid it out, we had only received one bid and the bid had come in at one million five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we rebid it and received three bids. This project is to take three hundred and sixty calendar days, which is, it's a year worth of work to be done. And it did come in on this bid cycle, it's still above what the estimate is from the engineers. The lowest bid is with Circle Industries in the amount of one million two hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty-three cents. We do recommend the lowest bidder and the engineer's estimate is one million dollars on this project, so there is a difference in cost. The engineers are here in case you have questions regarding the project and why there's the disconnect on the estimate compared to how the bids are coming in, still above what the estimate is.
Christian, will you grab the ball here and run with it a little bit, please?
Yes, so the original budget for this project was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's currently down to four hundred and twenty-one thousand seven forty-five after some of the initial engineering fees have been paid. So the proposal, if the court chooses to approve this project, we do have to seek funding elsewhere. And my proposal is there's a project for the courthouse skylight with a budget of nine hundred thousand dollars. And that was to replace the entire skylight with speaking with Juan in Public Works where they've come up with an alternative plan. Instead of replacing it, it's basically removing and replacing the current glass and then completely resealing it. Juan would have to confirm this, but I believe he said that would last about three to five years. And so the replacement would have to be put on hold and, you know, maybe considered at a later time, but that would free up the money to make up, to make up the shortage.
Would that in fact give us enough money to do the fire suppression system?
It would. Juan, if you can confirm the, it would probably be between fifty to sixty thousand for the alternative.
Yes, we had gotten some informal bids, I guess a while back, and we do have some bids that range anywhere from, or informal proposals that range anywhere from fifty to sixty-five thousand. But we, but to do the, kind of like a two to three-year, maybe five-year improvements on the leakage part, that would get us for another two to three, five years.
And what happens after that?
At that point in time, we would probably have to go back and get a.
Take another look at it.
Yes, and take a look at it and we are looking at other things too. I mean, we are looking at the roof, possibly doing some, some minor improvements on the roof to stop some of the leakage. But those are coming in also informal bids and probably we'd be within another four or five thousand dollars.
Think we could just give this courthouse to the courthouse developers who just bought that one and we could?
Do we need the skyline? I mean, do?
Oh, yeah. Because that's a dark area with, if you cover that thing up down there.
Yeah, I think there was a study done about a year ago or two years ago. And I think there was three alternatives. The first alternative was to remove and replace the whole thing and redo it. The second alternative was to kind of delete some of the lighting that would come in, so delete some of the glass. That was the second alternative. And then there was another alternative to pretty much cover the whole area and then just kind of leaves, and I guess it was a new design that they were coming in with, to leave that part. But all those designs range anywhere from, or all those costs for that, those designs range anywhere from eight hundred thousand to one point two million. So that's what we're looking at if we ever have to approach that or go that way.
And your best guess is, what'd you say, two to five years, three to five years?
I would say, based on the, if we go back and reseal it, probably I would say anywhere from two to five years.
So we're kicking the can down the road, but we don't have a lot of choice in the sense that we've got to put this fire system in. I don't understand why, I don't understand why it came in so much higher than, and I know that's not you, that wasn't under your watch, but I mean, I don't know how that, how did that work?
And it's a great question. And I will tell you that I have had a number of meetings, intense meetings.
I'm sure you have.
Over the last few weeks with everybody from the architect to the engineers and DePock has been in the middle of this. This, this is not good. Okay, let me just say that. Okay, guys, you're up. You've been, I've led you down the path.
Just identify who you are.
Yeah, please tell us who you are and what's going on.
Yes, sir Judge. So I'm Scott Stritty, Stritty Collins and Associates. I'm electrical engineer with the firm and the president of the firm. Mike Kesterson with our office is here with me as well. Mike was sort of leading the design work for us on this job. So history, when this thing first found its way to us, the request from, I guess Glenn and DePock at the time was, we've got red tag problems with the existing fire alarm system at McKenzie Jail. So we're replacing the fire alarm system at McKenzie and our interpretation of that, and I think theirs at the time too, was that it was McKenzie Jail proper that was to be dealt with. There's sort of three things that happened here that has sort of developed the perfect storm, if you will. First of all, it was scope creep and that's probably the bulk of this. So when we get into the job, we're, we're starting this job at a time when, just like you've heard about the TDLR stuff, you know, becoming more and more stringent over the passage of time, fire alarm codes, the International Fire Code, the NFPA, are becoming more stringent very rapidly. Where the TDLR has taken fifteen, twenty years to slowly ramp up the requirements to the point that we're at today, the fire codes have taken on additional requirements and become more stringent in a very short period of time. When this job started, we were sort of on the leading edge of that or very close to it. So the scope creep sort of has two different components to it. First of all, again, when we started the job, our perception of it, what the original, whatever, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand was based on was for McKenzie Jail proper. So when we take this, we're not going to start or get too far into design work without letting the HJ, the code enforcement authority having jurisdiction weigh in on the way he's going to enforce a project. So when we take this to the HJ, after we get a contract, again, which was based on McKenzie Jail proper only, he says, no, SATF is in the same building with McKenzie. So that's, this is all one building, even though it's sort of two separate functions, you're going to take care of that too. And furthermore, the CCF, the Wright Building and the Hope Building are all directly associated, even though they're outbuildings, they're all on the same campus and they're directly associated with the SATF function, so we're doing all of it. So that's, at that point, the scope creep was substantial. Now, in addition to that, when Mike put the initial number together, understand, we got nothing on paper, okay? This is, give us a rough idea, what's your opinion of probable construction cost is what it's called. Give us your opinion about what this is going to run. Now, we hadn't put pencil to paper yet, nothing's designed at this point. So we're looking at a jail, nobody does more big fire alarm system design work than us anywhere. Nobody's done more work at McKenzie or this building or Waco Street Jail or the original jail than we have. So we're relatively comfortable with cost per square foot numbers and that's all we've got at the time, is you just kind of square foot it, attach a typical industry standard number to it, move on down the road. Now, the square footage we were attaching that number to was the McKenzie Jail proper number at the time we did it, because that's what we thought we were dealing with. So then we get a contract and we've actually got, we've been engaged to provide service to the county, we take it to the HJ and that's where the rest of that story I was sharing with you a minute ago begins to spin off. Okay, so that's, that's the scope creep part of it, is we've got, again, earlier, sort of the word of the, of the day was complexity. And the current fire codes, as they're being enforced today, is very similar to the TDLR thing. Again, it's just that they've taken years to evolve where the fire codes are ramping up very rapidly. So if you look at those drawings that have been prepared for a fire alarm set of plans, it's about as busy as any job I've ever seen. It's just the quantity of devices, the quantity of addressable points, the system that's required to support all that for multiple buildings, this is a networkable system now. At any rate, at the end of the day, what ended up being produced for design work to satisfy the requirements of the HJ was substantially different than our perception of it was going in. And it kind of made the dollar per square foot number that we do with this thing before we had a job, well, the number was busted. I'll just tell you flat out, and I don't know how we would have known, how we would have seen that come in when we rendered the original number, but at the end of the day, the number was busted. So here we are, now, now the number's on bid day, the million and a quarter for the guy that's low and the two that are about a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand higher, that are right there. I mean, those, those two higher numbers are within a few thousand dollars of each other. The difference is that the low bid is a fire alarm contractor that's got the bonding capacity to prime this himself, where the other two are electrical subcontractors that are using a fire alarm sub for about seventy percent of the work roughly. So the prime contractor's putting his mark up on seventy percent of the work. So that's the difference in those two numbers. Had an electrical sub, had we had electrical contractor bids on all three, they all would have been up there. So, now the difference between when the scope creep was taken into account, you know, our updated budget number at that point was a million dollars and we're sitting at a million and a quarter. So I guess that's another thing that's sort of been coming upon me to speak to and I'll just tell you that at the end of the day, it's a, it's a complex job and they're working in a jail. We've, I've never figured out exactly how to quantify the scary stuff and the scary environment factor. I mean, we get lucky and we hit them most of the time. We don't miss many and I hate it that we missed this one, but when you look at this job and you look at it in the context of this contractor working in a jail with the access complexities associated with working in a jail and what has to be done, they're not going to, I used to be an estimator for eleven before I decided to put down a tool belt and estimator computer and go get an engineering degree. And I can tell you that when it comes to work like this and you get to the bottom line and then you step back from the job and look at the complexity of it, you're going to have to figure out what your unknown scary stuff factor is and that just goes on the bottom line. And I've never known exactly how to quantify that just because it's, it's different, it's the highest of the boulder. So, anyway, that's about all I've got on the matter, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Commissioners, we have, we have looked under every rock in this courthouse to try to find a million dollars. And that's why the recommendation is coming back from Juan and with us to go ahead and repair the skylight, use that money now, because I think you heard him say, this is a three hundred and sixty day job. That's a year. And I told the sheriff the other day, we're a year away from opening McKenzie Annex and we can't open McKenzie Annex until this thing is approved. And, and I've been out there after this all came up and you're right, it is a very And and I've been out there after this all came up and you're right, it is a very complex deal. And you never know when you get in there what else you're gonna find. But, um, we have to do this, we can't operate that facility. But we are pushing back, putting prisoners in there probably another twelve months. So that's where we are. And I hate like hell to bring this to the court because this this really got my attention.
One other thing, as far as a complexity item that I probably should've brought up, I'm not sure what this has to do even with the price of tea in China. But, um, th- this fire alarm contractor is not just dealing with the portion of work that he's priming. He's got the additional complexity of having to coordinate his work with the Turner Ramirez job that's renovating the substantial part of the jail that's being renovated now. So he's gotta piggyback and coordinate on top of somebody else's contract, which, again, it's the unknown scary stuff factor that he's just having to deal with. We don't see, I'll be honest, when when we look at this job in terms of just typical hourly rates, typical device costs, typical cable costs, typical fire alarm control panel costs, we still see a million dollars. That's the way we see this. But I, that's not the number we got and it's not gonna get any better.
Well, let me ask you something. Cuz you keep saying unknown factors. So I know from building, when you get in there and find unknown factors, the price goes up. So is there a possibility, and you're telling us basically, I think what I'm hearing, it's gonna take a year to complete it. And so is there a possibility this could end up costing more than what we bid here? When they get in there and they find something else, are some of these other costs to go up? I mean, I would think they're fixed costs for us now, but.
Commissioner, I would hope not. I will tell you some things that we've experienced on big fire alarm jobs that we've produced recently. First of all, after going through two or three iterations of laying our design work up against the HJ's requirements and because these, all these codes, the way they're written are subject to interpretation. And oftentimes, the way we interpret the fire codes on a common sense basis don't align perfectly in with the way the HJ interprets that same set of codes. So we try to be diligent and Mike's met with the city on at least.
Two or three different occasions.
But to verify that the way we interpret his requirements is the same way that he interprets his requirements. And after you would think, you would hope that after two or three of those sorts of meetings that we'd be done, right? Well, we've got work going on right now where that's proven not to be the case. So when the contractor, when the fire alarm contractor takes the set of plans that we truly believe to be coordinated after three meetings with him with their requirements, and the fire alarm guy takes it down to get a permit and he finds three or four other things that he's decided are required today that weren't required yesterday, then, you know, there's a clause in the specs that says the final fire alarm system coordination with HJ is on you, Mr. Contractor. And and it's it's your burden to make sure that what you bid is consistent with his requirements. And to to a certain degree, I have no problem enforcing that part of the spec. What I do have a problem with is when when I find out the fire alarm contractor did the same thing we did when he was bidding it and did his diligence and this stuff has come up after he bid it, it doesn't sit well with me to ram that down somebody's throat when they had no control over it. So we are dealing with some change order problems due to just that on a couple other fire alarm jobs that are ongoing right now. Um, again, I would hope not. Uh, we've spent a lot of time in fieldwork. You know, we we did, our firm did this original building. We've done everything, every prominent building job the county's done with the except the orchard fairground, with the exception of orchard fairgrounds over a period of sixty some odd years now. And we've enjoyed this relationship and the reason it's worked so well is that we we do our homework. We'd we'd, we've spent a lot of time in the field. Mike spent in total probably sixty, seventy hours out there and doing fieldwork, peeling stuff apart and figuring out how this system actually gets installed. It is a very detailed set of plans. All the same, i- it's not outside the realm of possibility that when they go tearing stuff out, they're gonna find something that we couldn't see, that is possible.
Well, and that's what I wanted to know. And I I don't think this court has any choice but to do it. But I think that we need to be proactive with the possibility that there may have to be some money coming back up that we're gonna have to face. I'm hoping not, I'm hoping you do it. But then we also need to be proactive in the fact that we are pushing the skylight down the road and we need to prepare down the road what we're gonna do about that as well.
This job should, just because of the, the, it's, this is a nasty, dirty, complicated fire alarm job. It's it's probably as busy as any fire alarm job we've ever done in a facility that has many, many years of patchwork associated with it, okay? My opinion is that if we've got a million and a quarter job, that contingency allowance ought to be about three percent of that million and a quarter. Now, I don't know, what, do we have a contingency allowance in Division One now?
I haven't seen one.
Do you know if we have? There is none. We have no contingency allowance in a bit amount right now.
Y'all usually put a contingency, don't you? Don't we?
We always do.
Yeah, I've always seen where there's contingency.
Generally speaking, you know, every, the the requirements of every client are a little bit different. And generally speaking, uh, the county has not. And I'm not talking about anything associated with this purchasing era. But since over the twenty-six years that I've been dealing with the county, I've never been able to get a contingency allowance included in any job.
Well, the city does it and that's the difference. I'm hoping you can do it for what you bid.
Yeah, I hope so too. That is something I I think that at some point the county should revisit, at least for this type of nasty, dirty, complicated renovation job. I think contingency allowances to the to the tune of two or three percent is a good thing.
I agree.
I don't remember, I don't even remember us having anything, all the all the jobs we've done, I know we never, we never had a contingency.
Well, and for whatever it's worth, it usually works, you know.
But I understand what you, I know where you, I know what you're coming from cuz that, we know you're gonna be able to dig into that one, you know.
But when we did that caterpillar generator job in two thousand and six, that was similar to this. As far as the distribution system modifications that had to be done to get that job in. And we fought hard for a contingency allowance and it couldn't get one. Now, that said, we got to that job with zero change orders. So it's possible and we're hopeful.
Very good. I don't like this, but it's where we are.
Sorry, Judge.
I know, I, look, I know. And, uh, we've just about found all the money we could find, so we better make this thing work.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're trying not to disappoint you.
Well, I know you won't, you never have. It's just, it was terribly disappointing to me to have the last meeting I had with that room full of people to be told you're a million, two hundred thousand dollars short. And that's that's, uh, that's not what anybody likes to hear, but we'll work through it. We'll work through it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Kristen, thank you for your help, by the way. She, uh, she really has worked with the auditor and all to find us money, so.
I appreciate your help.
All right, we need a motion.
I'm moved.
Second.
All right, here we go, all in favor? Aye, both, same sign. We're gonna watch every dollar, folks.
Yes, sir. All right. The last item that we have before you is the award for the diesel and unleaded fuel, um, contract. Let me pass this out. We took the the bids that were presented and did some analysis on it. It's not too complicated.
Well, it's late in the day, I hope the hell it's not too complicated.
It's hard to see.
All right. Good Lord.
Just as hard to see.
My goodness.
All right, on this, um, on this bid, we went out for bid for the filling of the tanks that the county has at various locations. There is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Twelve, uh, storage tanks that the county owns. And, um, so most of them are overseen by Public Works, but we do have one at Coastal Parks and we have one with Constable Precinct Four. And, um, all the locations are identified on the spreadsheet at the toward the beginning of the of the columns. You'll see all the different locations, the four yard, central yard and so forth. And then following that, you'll see the different type of fuel that each, uh, location requires. And also the, um, estimated, um, two, three rows over, two rows over, you can see the estimated gallons per year that are utilized. The the, this bid also included a language in there that when, in case of an emergency, that the contractor would provide us fuels, not only for these tanks, to tap them off and continue to, uh, keep them, um, full as we need it. Uh, also, uh, to fill any generators or, uh, storage, um, moving storage that we may bring in case of, uh, an emergency like a hurricane. And, uh, five bids were received and, um, the table provides you the different comparisons. Um, the, there were, um, the companies are noted at the very top. As you can see, it's Sun, Sunoco, Suncoast, Pinnacle. And then if you turn the page, there is Gold Star and Ak, uh, I always butchered this name, Ak, Akandecky. And in receiving those, there are some very standard costs that need, uh, that come with the cost of buying gasoline. Those are the fees, freight fees, less fees, oil spill fees, delivery fees. And there's also a state tax. Um, and they vary between the the companies. As you can see, that, uh, they're not all the same. What the vendor constant per gallon, that, what that defines, that is the markup that they're giving, that they're proposing per gallon by each company. That is the very first column under the name of the company. It says vendor constant per gallon, that is the markup. So, um, adding the markup plus all the fees and the delivery cost, um, the, we totaled what the cost would be, uh, per gallon and the total would be for the number of estimated gallons needed in a year's time as the history that was provided from the different departments. And then we totaled that cost at the bottom of the spreadsheet and you'll see some totals at the very bottom. And that total, the the first total number is what it would cost if we awarded the contract to that company for all of the locations. The second number is where we took the, um, cost per gallon at each location because the cost does vary, um, and, uh, totaled the lowest cost per location. And we have tallied that on the back side. You'll see the lowest bidder extended cost, the very last column on the right hand side. And we totaled that. That total came out to sixty thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and fourteen cents. So we took, if we picked the lowest bid per location and compared it to what the cost would be per company if we awarded everything to one company. And the difference, um, for the lowest bidder getting the award for all of the locations, it would be Sunoco in energy and it's only a difference of seven hundred and forty-three dollars and ten cents. I think it's well worth the headache of having one vendor provide, um, fuel for all of the locations and not have to try to remember, oh, this is diesel, I need to order it from so and so instead of from one company. So the recommendation to make it, to cut it shorter, is to award to Sun, Sunoco Energy Services for all of the locations and to provide, uh, fuel for the county, um, on a regular basis and also during an emergency.
Who who is it with right now?
Right now, we, um, have it with Suncoast Resources. They bought out Susser, who was a local provider here in Corpus Christi. And Susser was on the buy board. So when they bought him out, then, uh, Suncoast is not on the buy board. So we had to bid it out, that was one reason we bid it out. The second reason was that FEMA, uh, would, uh, required us to, uh, provide local bid out contracts when we're in an emergency situation in order to reimburse. So this is a precautionary measure.
And and this could go up, the price per gallon for the diesel could go up according to what happens in the market. It could shoot to five dollars a gallon.
Yes.
Not here, but I'm just saying over the nation.
And but we have in the bid documents that 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 the cost of gas will be what the local, um, price per gallon is, um, for our section plus the markup.
Okay.
Okay.
And and this diesel that's used here, are these for, everybody uses it? I mean, is it big, the big trucks, who uses this right here?
It depends on where the the big tanks are located. The public, the only county departments and county equipment use the gasoline that we're purchasing, if that's what you're asking.
I'm asking where, who uses it?
Okay, uh, Public Works is uses, uses a majority. The ones that are in Corpus Christi, like four yard, central yard, the Noises County, uh, the one that's across courthouse. The jail has a tank, uh, that they use, um, it's used primary for the generator. Um, that that one's on the Waco Street side. Uh, there's a Robstown Yard that's also Public Works. Uh, the Porter Ansis one is used by Constable Precinct Four. And then the Packery Maintenance one is used by Coastal Parks, there's.
And do y'all have any kind of safeguards on these tanks when they use them? I'm assuming you do.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, who's using them for which vehicle and it matches up with the mileage on their vehicles? Do y'all check those things?
The departments have oversight over that and they have dispensing, most of them have dispensing, um, uh, monitors where they have to enter a code. Public Works prob, the pack is gone, uh, could tell you what the system's like.
I'm just curious, I was assuming y'all had a safety measure so you could know who's using that.
Yes, not anybody can show up to the pump and bring their.
Their vehicle? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm off, that's right.
No, sir, not today or tomorrow.
Any questions about this? I mean, this is a lot of work and thank you. Thank you very, very much. And and the recommendation is a sound one. Let's get it all from one place and we don't have to worry about who's gonna help us. And particularly when we get into an emergency situation, it is really nice to be able to turn to that person and say, you got it, baby.
Yes, sir.
You got it.
You got it, baby.
You bet. All right. Need a motion. I have a motion, I have a second, see no other questions, all in favor? Aye. Okay, Altra, what'd you do, run him off?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm presenting the, uh, budget change order number eighteen for current fiscal year and also the capital project budget change order number sixty-nine for this current fiscal, uh, fiscal year as well. On the number, um, eighteen, we're just moving for cover by professional expenses, uh, services and then regular maintenance repairs. And then for capital projects, we're moving the remaining balances for completed projects and then to add into a new, uh, project, um, forty-four, forty-six thousand and four hundred dollars. And then the new, uh, project, uh, we're moving funds from the commission, uh, Precinct Four to the London County Park, uh, new project. Have any questions?
So is that item, uh, the CEO project change order, is that tied into what we discussed earlier?
Yes.
Yes.
So we already knew we were gonna go into negotiations or what is this?
I just asked that it be moved to.
Forehand?
Yes, it's just, we're just moving it, we're not using the funds. We just, we just have the project all set after all the discussions and approval are done.
So that that's just moving it along, we don't have to.
Correct.
Authorizing, okay, all right.
Explain that again, I missed it while I was. What are you doing?
Yeah, we're just moving, we're just allocating the funds in case we're gonna, uh, uh, authorize, uh, commissioners and judges going ahead with the, uh, London County, uh, Park. That is being discussed in previous.
Parker Pool and.
Correct.
And the, and there.
Yes, all the, uh, Precinct Four.
Y'all are moving the funds over.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah, from my two thousand and fifteen COs to another fund in Precinct Four.
Correct.
Okay, so you move them before, you don't move them after it happens?
Yes, it, it's been there, but we're not using them, so it's just creating the project, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Getting ready, is it?
Need a motion.
I'm moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Got a second?
I do.
All in favor? Aye. Aye, both, same sign. Number two?
Yes, number two, eh, we just wanna, uh, reclassify the pay group, the step, uh, for the public director, the number, uh, the new director of Public Works, uh, from forty-five to, uh, pay group number forty-eight.
Commissioners, when we did the hire, the court approved this and then it was pointed out to me and through the auditor and some other folks that we had not have, we had not put the right thing on the agenda to properly designate the pay group for the new Public Works Director, so we're go, we're backing up and officially approving what the court approved at a meeting when we hired one, so that's what this is and then in a minute you're gonna see an agenda item where we actually hire him again. So that's what this is for. This is exactly what the court agreed to do when we agreed this and Kristen can comment on that if she wanted to, but this was the deal we made and this is the classification that we made for him to take the job and I move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, both, same sign. Thank you. All right. Next is the May report.
Correct.
Okay?
And here we're just going through the, um, financial report as of May two thousand and eighteen. If we go into page number six, we can see the fund balances as of May eighteen. Uh, we're doing good on the, uh, government wide level, government funds level, sorry. And then we go into page thirteen, we will see the, um, group health is doing pretty good as we compared to last year, it was a negative balance and now we're, we're really doing on a positive side. We got, moving across and we're going to page thirty-five, so we see and as of May, how departments are being and, and budget, how they're using the budget and overall, they're, they're being pretty good.
Commissioners, there, there's a lot in May and, and, and let me, and rather than sit here for a long time and it's late and we've been here a long time, if you haven't read the formal report, please get a copy of that and take a look at it because May is getting us very close to where we're gonna be having some really tough discussions here in another thirty or forty-five days. So take a hard look at May and you can get a good idea of where we are. Generally, we're, we're about where we ought to be. There are a few departments that we're watching it pretty closely, but we're getting great cooperation, but please take some time to look at May because when we get started talking in July, shortly after we get all the budget numbers, you're gonna see how this really ties in, so take a hard look at May if you will, please. All right. I don't think we need to vote on that, do I? Do I need to vote on that? Just says month of the report. I'll, move acceptance. I have a second. All in favor? Aye. That takes us to the executive session. We don't have any executive session. Uh, we do have a board appointment. I'd like to move that we, that we appoint one as the county engineer, uh, as county engineer to the Coastal Bend Council of Governments, uh, to take, uh, the place of Glenn on the cog. If I could have a second, please.
Second.
I got it. All in favor? Aye, both, same sign. This has been a long day. I want to thank everybody for their patience. We will have our next meeting in when? July the when?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. By then we should have all of our budget numbers. Did you get the call from Ronnie?
Uh, we will have the certified numbers on the twenty-fifth.
I know, but he called me yesterday. Did he call you?
No, he did not.
Five, five percent? He needs to call you. I told him to call you and talk to you.
Okay.
It's better than we thought.
Great, great.
We have a court meeting on the twenty-fifth?
We do have a court meeting on the twenty-fifth. Yes.
All right, um, I've already mentioned the fact that we lost a judge today. We all keep his family and our thoughts and prayers. Uh, we'll take some action on replacing him at the next meeting on the twenty-fifth. Uh, get yourself ready, uh, we're gonna be having some, uh, pretty good discussions for the next sixty days on the budget. Uh, we've gotten some suggestions from a number of you. We're gonna take a look at those and see what we can do with them. Um, I only have one person that I'd like to adjourn in memory of and that's Herb Morrison. Herb was, uh, Mr. Rent-A-Car in this community for a long, long time and he ran, uh, all the major rent-a-car facilities at, uh, in Corpus Christi for a long, long time. Herb passed away here recently. He was a good man, knew him through Rotary and other places and he was a really fine citizen and he's gonna be missed. Brent, you got anybody?
Yes, sir. Uh, two people, um, Judge, you may have known Steve Pickett. Uh, Steve, um, was the father of Jim Pickett and, um, Jenna Kaufman and, um, was a longtime member of this community and he recently passed away, uh, as well as Gladys Neiman. Gladys was, um, one of my math teachers in junior high many, many years ago, uh, and she passed away as well. So for Gladys Neiman and to Steve Pickett's family, our, my condolences.
Thank you. Jack, anybody?
Well, just, again, just, again, Judge Baldetta's real dear friend of mine. We're all gonna miss him and I know, uh, our prayers go out to the family, hopefully give them the strength that they need.
Very good. John, anybody?
Also Judge Baldetta's just, uh, family's been close to him for, for many, many years and so, um, you know, he, the, the timing of his, of his being sick, it, it just, he went quickly. And I know he loved his family a lot, his, his son works in Sheriff's Department and, uh, or, and a couple of sons in our law enforcement followed him as he was in, in our sheriff's office and, uh, then became JP and so I know, knew Judge Baldetta's for probably about twenty years, so, uh...
Yeah.
Uh, he will be missed and definitely thinking about him and his family and so, um, our condolences to them.
Carolyn, anybody?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I missed one. Roxy's father-in-law passed away, Mr. Sandoval. Roxy, yeah, Roxy's father-in-law passed away, Garcia Sandoval, and he will be certainly missed by her and all of the family and I'm sorry I overlooked that the first time. Uh, this was, just happened, uh, in the last few days, so when you see Roxy, tell her that if you will, please. I'll stand for a moment.
We didn't know anything about that one.
Thank you all.